For our regular Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights. Meeting Board number five for August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'd just like to start out this meeting with a moment of reflection for the lives that have been lost in Maui and the tremendous amount of damage and suffering that's happening and happened to that community as well as on the Big Island. And just for all of us to pause and reflect on how precious and fragile life is and do everything that we can to support our brothers and sisters living on our neighbor island. I know we'll have more of this to come as the days unfold and we'll find out more. And perhaps there's going to be a lot of discussions about how conditions might be improved or rebuilding and all of that. So perhaps we can lend our manao for the folks on Maui when that time comes. But for right now, I think we just need to hold them close in our hearts. I did have someone who called me and said that he was interested in going on for number two, which was filling a board vacancies, who had a large property burned down on Maui and was dealing with that very intimately. And I wonder if we wanted to, or if it's permissible to postpone the filling of board vacancies, because he said that he was interested in running for the board. I don't know if we can do that, Dylan. If we can, then I would propose that we do that.
We cannot postpone for that reason, but I don't believe no one else contacted me. Chair, can you hear me? Chair?
Yes.
Okay, we can't postpone for that reason, but no one else contacted me, so I think we'll be okay. You can say, are there any volunteers for these two vacancies? If we hear none, we move on.
Okay, are there any volunteers for these two vacancies? Okay, hearing none and assuming there's none in Diamond Head clubhouse, a golf course clubhouse, let's move on to our officer elections. We have one open position for secretary.
Pardon me, Chair, one second. Did you know which sub district? We have one in Sub District Two and two in three.
We have one in Kapahulu Sub District and two in the Diamond Head Sub District.
The Kapahulu? Okay, are you Wendell by chance?
Wendell.
Gotcha, yeah, ex-member. Okay, so have you, you haven't moved, correct? Okay, Chair, we have last terms member Wendell Marikawa here, who would like to fill the Sub District Two vacancy.
Okay, what's the procedure for us of doing this?
We just need a, just one board member needs to nominate whoever volunteers. And then we just do a roll call vote. We don't need a second, so just one nomination for Wendell would be in order and then a vote.
And it's a majority of those present, or does it have to be a quorum? Because I'm not sure that we have one at this point unless you have.
We did, we did just reach quorum.
Okay.
And it's just a simple majority, yeah, so quorum vote.
Okay, then I will nominate Wendell to rejoin the board for Sub District Two.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other volunteers? Hearing none, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Please state the name of the person you're voting for, or you can abstain. You can say Wendell or Marikawa, that would be great. Alan.
Wendell.
Beutel.
Wendell.
Decker.
Wendell.
Hasina. Knight.
Wendell.
Mattson.
Staying.
Merchi. Velasco.
Wendell.
Weitzel.
Wendell.
Bruce Wong.
Wendell.
Linda Wong. Welch.
Wendell.
All right, the motion passes with eight in favor and one abstention. Congratulations, Wendell, you can come up here.
And will you take care of this swearing in later, or do you need to do that now?
Chair, I'll swear him in on the side while we're in person here, but you can move on while we do have. The next item is election of secretary. So actually, if we can call just a one minute recess, because I'll have to handle that.
Sure.
Thank you. Wendell, can I swear you in real quick?
I'll take this moment to Rafia contacted me and wondered how we might as a board support the folks in Maui. And I know we maybe won't have a discussion about it now, but if you have some good ideas on if there's ways that you think that would be practical or moral support for them, I'd be happy to hear about them and please feel free to contact me with your ideas.
You have to me. Some, I swear.
Some, I swear.
They will faithfully support the Constitution and the laws.
I'll support her. Constitution.
Laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
For the state of Hawaii.
For the state of Hawaii.
The Charter and laws.
Charter laws.
Of the sitting county of Honolulu.
Of the sitting county of Honolulu.
And the provisions.
And provisions.
The neighborhood plan.
Of the neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously.
And will conscientiously.
And impartially.
And thus.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my beliefs.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my belief.
As a member of the Neighborhood Board.
As a member of the Neighborhood Board.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And perfect, if you can fill these out, that'd be great. All right, Chair, we're good to go with the election of secretary.
Thank you. And are there nominations for the position of secretary?
I nominate Rafia Hasina.
Are there any other nominations?
Chair, this is Dylan Weitzel. I'm gonna nominate former Secretary Beutel.
Okay, so we have Rafia and John David. And are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, do we take a vote on this then, Dylan?
Yes, so roll call vote, same rules apply. Please state the name of the person you're voting for. We have Hasina and Beutel.
And how many do we need to have a positive motion for either candidate?
A simple quorum, which would be eight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Alan.
Beutel.
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 Decker.
Abstain.
Hasina. Knight.
Beutel.
Mattson.
Questionably Rafina.
Merchi. Velasco.
Beutel.
Weitzel.
Beutel.
Wong.
Beutel.
Linda Wong. Winston.
Hasina.
And Wendell. Beutel or Hasina? Hasina?
Yeah.
All right. All right, Chair, motion does not pass, three for Hasina and six for Beutel.
Okay, so.
We can run through it one more time if you wish.
No, I'd like to move on and let's.
We are missing several members. Yeah, I don't know if we'd make the vote tonight, so we can move on to the next item.
Did, did, did I hear Margaret chime in on this one, or is she, are you seeing her? Margaret.
I called her, but I didn't hear anything.
Okay, let's move on then to our esteemed officers for fire and safety. We appreciate very much what you do. We see your heroics in action in Maui and every day on our streets in Honolulu. Thank you so much. And I would like to invite our Waikiki Fire Department first.
Hello. Part Fighter Wise, Engine Seven with the Waikiki Fire Station. Incident statistics for July two thousand and twenty-three fires, structure, we have two. Wildland nuisance and cooking, we have none. Activated alarms, we had four. Emergencies, medical, we had seventy-four this month. Motor vehicle collisions with pedestrian, one motor vehicle crash. Two, mountain rescues, one, no ocean rescues. Hazardous material incidents, one. Safety tips and announcements. Fire safety tip, fire and fall prevention, help ensure the safety of our esteemed elders. Implementing prevention to the safety in Kipuna. Stay in the kitchen when frying food and cooking on the stove top. Keep a lid nearby. If a pan of food catches fire, slide a lid over and turn off the burner. Remember the stove top and oven are not to be used for storage. Ensure working smoke alarms are installed properly. Bed shaker and strove alarms are available for hearing or visually impaired occupants. Plan your escape from fire based on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear. Ensure windows and doors open easily and practice your escape plan.
That's it. Thank you. Are there any questions? Or Waikiki Station?
Yes.
Ms. Mattson?
I have a burning question, no pun intended, regarding brush fires. We've experienced a horrendous tragedy in Lahaina. We have a similar situation here with homeless igniting fires from timbers they cut from the kiavi trees around Diamond Head. We've had several brush fires. We had one two acre fire with winds whipping around Diamond Head and dry brush. What is the plan to defend all the residences in this sub district from these fires such as we have seen in Lahaina? Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Captain Chase from Waikiki Fire Station. We, we go to those fires and it's a, it's a hard thing to manage and HPD and all the other enforcement agencies have been helping to clear the area. But that's the best we can do and do our job on our side if it does catch fire this time, but we just log it in and hopefully, hope for the best kind of.
Don't you think there should be an emergency plan such as removing the encampments from this area because it is a hazardous zone?
We see every, maybe every quarter, we see, we see the encampments being cleared just personally, so I'm not sure if, what else they can do. Because there's so many homeless and so many areas for them to make camp in, so.
You're absolutely correct. There's nothing anybody does, so nothing happens and the danger persists. Perhaps our mayor's representative could weigh in on this during his agenda item. Thank you.
I, I had a question. I know other jurisdictions have used goats to remove excess shrubbery or grass that's, that's a fire hazard. And I remember a couple of years ago, a similar scary situation on Coco Head, where the flames were coming right down to people's homes. Is there a possibility that we might enlist something of a, you know, of a natural sort of control like that? And are you aware of anything like that in the state or other programs that we might employ in this area?
From our side, not, not from our side at this time, maybe facing from land management or something like that, but yeah, that's a, that's a good, good idea, though.
Okay, so maybe take that up with the DLNR has jurisdiction there. And have any of your crew gone over to help with the fires in Maui or the Big Island?
Yes, they just, they just left this afternoon. I'm not sure about the exact number, but about thirty to forty of our members. And then depending on what else we can send, I think the Fire Department is gonna do whatever they can on this side to help out our Maui brothers and sisters, so.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate your very good work and Godspeed to everybody working on the fires and recovery. Thank you for coming tonight.
I, I have a quick question. As referencing protecting the Diamond Head neighborhood houses, has anyone looked into putting in a fire break behind the houses?
Not that I know of. That's, I think that's, that's fed land down there. I think that's all fed land, so they would have to make that decision. And then I think from that street on goes on to County, I'm pretty sure. So it's like a mix of all these agencies and they just have to, we just have to figure out how to do it all together and make the best decision to make it happen. Well, your, you guys' options are good. You guys should forward that up the chain and I think I can try, next time we see them, we can try to talk to the next time we see them clearing the land and clearing, clearing out the encampments. Try to see what their, their ideas are and see if we can pass it on to you guys next time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. There's no more questions. We'll move on to Honolulu Police Department, District Six, Waikiki, Kapialani Park, Diamond Head.
Hi, good evening. Of course, the stats for Waikiki for the month of July. We had two robberies. From the previous four for the month, burglary seven, the previous month was twelve. Thefts a hundred and eighty-two, previous month was a hundred and seventy-one. U M Vs nine, previous month was fourteen. Assaults forty-eight for the previous thirty-nine. Sex crimes four, previous month was six. Escape of bicycles, twenty-one, previous month was twenty-nine. Speeding twenty-six citations, previous month was thirteen. We had two thousand three hundred thirty-three parking citations, as the previous month was one thousand nine hundred sixty. Loud mufflers, twenty-nine, the previous month was fifteen. And park closures, one hundred and fourteen citations with nine arrests from the previous month of one hundred and twelve citations, fifteen arrests. The total calls for service for the month of July was five thousand four hundred and twenty-seven.
We have questions for District Six. I had a question, are those statistics including Waikiki? Or are they exclusive of Waikiki, just in our neighborhood?
It's for the total, all area of Waikiki.
Okay, so the, the majority, and you may not know about the majority of the assaults of the forty-six or forty-seven. Would, would you imagine that most of those were in Waikiki?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Lieutenant Tomah? We appreciate you coming, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Nakamura, will you give us your report for Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights, each Honolulu District Seven?
Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with the District Seven. And also online is Sergeant Hung, Garrett Hung. Okay, these are stats for July as compared to the previous month. Motor vehicles went down to fours compared to eight. Burglaries went up fours compared to two. Thefts in general went down twenty as compared to twenty-two. And U M Vs went drastically down three as compared to seventeen. This is out of calls for service of six thousand two hundred and twenty-five for the district. Further statistical information can be found at HonoluluPD.org. And our safety tip for the month is back to school, safety tips, which I believe I sent to you folks. Just remember that when the, the kids are going back to school, obviously they're kiki, so they're a lot smaller than than adults, so it's, it's easy to miss them if you're not looking out for them. If they're on bicycles, if you can, definitely encourage them to wear bright clothing and also a helmet if they're under sixteen. And lastly, if you're gonna walk your kids to school, make sure you you walk with them in hand so they don't run out onto the street. And that's our safety tip for the month.
Thank you. Questions for Lieutenant Nakamura? Ms. Mattson?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Lieutenant the same question I asked the Fire Department about protections for this area so that we do not turn into an inferno like Lahaina for all the reasons I stated before. Thank you.
Um. It's a difficult question for the Police Department to answer a fire question, but I think the, I think, I think it was the Waikiki Captain, he kind of touched upon the issue. If you're gonna make a fire break, you have to see whose land it is and then take it from there. So if it's on the upper side, obviously it's gonna be mostly state and I think very little fed. If it's on the lower side, it's gonna be the city and county. So that, that would be the situation as far as creating a, a fire lane, except that we don't, we, we don't. HPD doesn't make fire, fire lanes.
It would seem that someone could come up with recommendations for discussion. Perhaps the board needs to write a resolution. Thank you.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Nakamura. I think a lot of people and that the, the papers pointed out that we're in sort of new territory about these sorts of situations of how you know, these might come about in the future, so it's probably something we have to look at just as a city more in depth than a county.
Absolutely. Yeah, if you think Diamond Head is bad, you gotta, you gotta go out wine high and stuff. It's, those fires can rip up very quickly and without any warning and cause a lot of danger. So, yeah, absolutely. We need to, to look at that as a, as a, as a state, yeah.
Yep, yep. And Ms. Hoshiko?
Yes, I have a question. Kapialani Community College often has groups of students who come for not only long-term school, but short-term training programs at our campus. Last week, one of the Japanese students was attacked in Waikiki and his backpack was stolen, but he was with a group. So I wonder if you have any advice that you can give to us that we can share with the, the students to try to mitigate or, or, you know, make sure that these incidents don't happen?
Um, sure. I guess as far as robbery prevention is, is concerned, continue to do what they're, they, exactly what they were doing. When you go out, especially in crowded areas like Waikiki, don't go out alone, go out in groups. Simple things like if you're walking on the sidewalk, don't, don't have your bag or your handbag on the, the the car side of the road. And lastly, don't, just, just be aware of your surroundings. I mean, it's everybody wants to have a good time, but also just, just, just be aware of where you are, what time it is and, and the people around you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Nakamura? Yes, Mr. Wong. You're on mute.
I didn't have any question.
It's, I'm sorry, Kendrick Wong.
Sorry, sorry about that. Lieutenant Nakamura, I've read some studies that slowing down traffic or traffic calming measures reduce crime in neighborhoods. Do you have any experience with that, or how do you feel about those ideas for reducing crime in Diamond Head?
I can't, I can't speak for the department because I'm not, I'm not of the records at ranks, but I think I think personally, that makes a lot of sense because if you if you drive like crazy, you're gonna act like crazy. If you drive with aloha, you're gonna, you're gonna be aware of the people and surroundings around you. So that, that does make a lot of sense. But I can't, I can't speak for the department officially as far as what their stand is on that, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes when I walk at night on Diamond Head Road, I notice the police patrol Diamond, Diamond Head Road. But while they're trying to get from one end to the other, people race through when the police are not there. I'm just wondering what are some things that you guys can do to you know, to help patrol or monitor that area better?
Sure, we've, we've had a couple tragic accidents. This is just outside of this particular neighborhood board, but we just had a really bad accident on the viaduct by the, by the mall, motorcycle accident. And we have, right now, we're, we're doing a lot of speed enforcement, not particularly in Diamond Head, but we only have a certain number of people in this district. So right now, we're in the Hawaii Kai area, but that will change and rotate as the needs, needs. It changes in, in, in a rotational basis, so. I mean, last couple of days, we've given out hundreds of citations for speeding. But ultimately, ultimately, I think it's gonna take a combination of that, a little pain in the, in the pocket when they go to court and, but mostly looking, looking at, looking at the situation as, as a, as a society and say, hey, maybe we do need to slow down a little bit and drive with aloha and, and don't use the freeway as a, as a raceway. And these things are silly. And we go out and we tag and we tag. But ultimately, they're, they're, they're fines and people pay them and they, they change their behavior or they don't. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Nakamura, we're gonna have a, a lot of discussion about this because our Public Safety Committee will be meeting here shortly. And then we hope to meet with Mr. Morton in a smaller group at the end of the month to discuss some of these issues about how we might help the public to drive with aloha and maybe use us as a test model. It would be interesting to see how, you know, police calls might go down or you have less incidents to respond to because of people driving with more aloha and driving in a safer fashion. I had a question specifically, and I think you're right on, drive with aloha. Every mailbox should be mailed, one of those, or every car owner. I've noticed a dramatic increase in tagging lately. Have, are there any of spray painting of everything, from trees to buildings to sidewalks to everything? Have you been also noticing an uptake in this? Is it gang related? Is it just punk kids? Is it, have you been giving out more citations that you're aware of and what that would fall under?
Um, I'm not personally aware of an increase in, in graffiti tagging. But I can, I can research it for the back, you know, maybe the past month or so, see if there has been an increase, but, but yeah, I'm not personally aware of any increase.
Okay, I just anecdotally just seeing, seeming to see a lot more of it. And I, I was speaking with someone who they were, they were working on another park in Ala Park, and it was apparently that these, the graffiti indicates drug signs like who controls the park at a certain time for illicit activities. And so that it was essentially like business opening hours and closing hours depending on the gang or entity. And I don't, I don't know if we have that over here or not, or if it's just, you know, like I said, kids with spray paint can.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not aware of any increase.
And Ms. Mattson, you had one more question? Go ahead, Bruce.
You know, my my question going back to um limiting speeders, that the two areas that I know of, I'm very familiar with, for limiting speeding is Kalii Street, right in front of Kalakau Intermediate and Poly Highway, when those elevated speed humps were put in there, they didn't need the motorcycle cops, you know, setting up to tag speeders coming down because nobody would speed anymore. And so on Kalii Street, nobody speeds there anymore because of elevated speed humps. And so if you put it on Diamond Head Road, it'll slow everybody down and you you won't have people speeding down there. You won't have that problem. Monserat as well. To me, it's it's kind of ludicrous to put in a for the politicians to ask for one of those um circular things that make everybody go around to slow down traffic, when all you need is one of those elevated speed humps. It slows everything down. To me, that's that's the that's the answer. That's all I have.
You, Bruce. And Ms. Mattson, you have to follow?
Yes, sorry, I didn't have uh the audio on. A procedural uh comment uh to Mr. Chair, um Margaret Murchie has had an excellent comment in the chat. I hope that you recognize it and somebody is able to answer this. And I and and additionally, I agree with the board member, Bruce Wong.
Okay, thank you. And that comment says, how about suspend the license period of time for excessive speeders? They do this in Canada. And another one we need to speak on.
That sounds great to me, but you gotta talk to the courts about that.
Great, another level one. And I'll encourage folks, yeah, and Margaret says it works. Yes, it's it's I I know in Scandinavia, if you have a beer, they just take away your license forever and uh it it. Those folks that are interested in this traffic safety, Margaret Murchie is going to be holding uh a public safety and traffic um uh committee meeting here shortly, and that'll be announced publicly. Um but if you are interested in contributing to that, I would encourage you to contact Margaret. And um Kendrick, do you have one more question?
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering, Lieutenant Nakamura, um Councilman Tommy Waters' office had told me that HPD actually requested speed humps along Diamond Head Road. Um. Are you aware of that or?
Um.
Or would you be able to?
I'm I'm the lieutenant for the patrol um officers. Uh so I'm not personally aware of any request like that, but that I don't usually a request would go into the Department of Transportation because we don't we don't design the roads, we don't put up the signs, we don't make the decisions on where a stop sign or an elevated um sidewalk is. Uh we just enforce the law. So while I'm not personally aware of that, I don't, yeah. Yeah, maybe there was some kind of um, we might be in total agreement to have a a si- elevated sidewalk in a particular location, but um uh yeah, we we wouldn't um. Yeah, it that's not that's not what we do. Yeah, we we enforce the law.
Okay, that may be a question for Mr. Waters' office then. And yeah, Michelle. Okay, I think maybe we can uh move on from here. These questions are not going to be answered right now. I think that.
A part a point of order, a procedural question. Uh again, uh um resident Mick has a comment in the chat, we need speed humps on Leahy Avenue too, I believe. Uh Director Morten will be addressing Leahy Avenue uh as well as Diamond Head Road, so that is a suggestion for him. I just wanted to bring that up. That's not part of my speaking time, uh but it seems we need to monitor the chat a little more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I did. I I bundled it in with what Margaret had said, so sorry, that wasn't clear. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Nakamura. I know you you have an endless task for you. We'll see you next month. Uh next, we have uh our friends from the Board of Water Supply. I see Kathleen's name there, but I don't know if it's Kathleen today. It might be somebody else.
I'm here, Winston.
Okay, welcome, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time. Uh we had one main break report on fifteen oh three St. Louis Drive on July twelfth. It was a four-inch uh ductile iron that was repaired. It was the only main break in your community uh in the past month. Uh we just also want to remind people about disaster preparedness to make sure that you're ready in the event of a hurricane to have at least one gallon of water per person per day for at least fourteen days. And also, please do not forget about your pets. And as always during an emergency, please stay tuned to media reports. And as we sadly learned with Maui, their hurricane can have extremely disastrous and unintended consequences. So uh even if it does go far south of us, that does not mean that it's not going to have a negative impact. So our house absolutely go out to the folks on Maui. Um, I do have a couple of just quick updates, uh not a lot of information, but our last at last month's meeting reported that we're going to be starting a uh water system improvement project in the Diamond Head area. We are anticipated to start that project in January twenty twenty four. I will continue to provide updates as information becomes available. And the Diamond Head fencing project, we're still waiting approvals from the State Historic Preservation Department. Unfortunately, they um um have a lot of projects in the in the queue, and we are doing the best that we can to get our projects through. Uh we do meet with them every month uh to prioritize. Once we have that, then we can submit ours um CDUA permit application, and then we're we're hoping to get this started in March of twenty twenty four. And as always, I will keep you in the loop every step of the way as that project moves forward. I am available if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. I we have uh Joni Dobbs, question for Kathleen.
Thank you very much. I have a process question regarding who to contact about a structural failure that's pres- presently occurring at our condo retaining wall. It's immediately adjacent to the city and county sidewalk and the Board of Water Supply waste and supply lines. We're not sure the cause of the failure, whether it is just our wall or part of the water supply uh structure. It may be a joint problem. Therefore, how do we proceed to resolve the problem before there is a retaining wall failure?
Okay, uh do this. Uh, please call this number eight oh eight seven four eight
Okay.
five zero four one. That is the direct line to our communications team. Whoever answers, you let them know that I asked that you call them.
Great.
And and because it we have, we can send out an investigator. That is absolutely not a problem. We're happy to send out an investigator to determine what's going on there. Uh, it may be something on the condominium's property, but we can help you determine that. So uh whoever you talk to in that office, and I will alert them that you will be calling uh to work with our customer care team. And again, they'll send out an investigator uh would be helpful. We probably will need to work with whoever your property manager is and work directly with them to determine what's going on.
Mahalo.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Good question.
And I see in person, we have Vice Chair Velasco with a question.
Um, yes, last a few days ago, I saw a video put out by the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Navy and Captain Mark Solhany state that the Navy had lost um their labs had lost a couple of the samples of the water that they had taken to um check for forever chemicals. And um they also said that, you know, they they couldn't speed up the process by uh what, taking them three months to get these samples uh read? So I was wondering if uh what the Board of Water Supply, if you guys can do anything to speed along the process and to help us convince the Navy to get testing facilities here on the island so that samples cannot get lost.
Uh I I I thank you for that. I had not heard that. I've actually just got back on island myself on Tuesday, so thank you for that. A couple of things. Um, yeah, that's uh kind of interesting. I'll leave it at that. Uh, when it comes to the test, when it comes to the tests, I have to be, I'll be blunt with you guys. We still send all of our samples to the mainland. That is not what takes the time. It's these tests are highly technical tests. The tests are the test. You can't do them any quicker because they they're highly technical. So even though they're going to the mainland, even if you were to do it in Hawaii, it would still take the same amount of time. All you would be saving is maybe twelve hours of travel time. Because, you know, things go overnight FedEx to get there very fast. That would pretty much be all you would say be saving. So we're able to get our PFOS tests from the labs that we're doing. It still takes us a a good month to get our PFOS tests, and that's because the tests are highly technical. And we're testing for levels that are at two parts per trillion right now. So it's a they're very, very sophisticated, highly technical tests. So that having a lab here in Hawaii is not going to speed up the testing. Uh I can't speak to who the Navy's using for their labs. Um, I know we try to, we push our labs pretty hard to get our tests as back as quickly as possible. Uh but I can't speak to the Navy. And yes, I can assure you that Mr. Lau on a regular basis is pushing the Navy for testing and getting testing. And he's not only pushing the Navy, he's pushing the other arms of the military as well. Because remember, when it comes to PFOS, it's not just the Navy that has been using firefighting foam, the Aquias film firefighting foam. The Army has used it, the Air Force, the National Guard. Uh the whole issue up in Pearl City is all due to the National Guard, not the Navy. So he is pushing all branches of the military to be transparent and to uh put their tests out there to the public so we know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you ever had a sample loss that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
And Daisy Marai?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Kathleen. Thank you for all the great work. Director Lau did a presentation for the Manoa Board this month. He mentioned that the the water rate's gonna go up in July of next year. And I had a question regarding um, it says something about affordable uh residential or complexes will have some kind of exemption. I'm not clear on exactly what he was um what the gist of it is, but I was curious because I should know the governor decided to make affordable emergency. So you know, everybody's doing that right now on the basis that's not really affordable, but you know, a lot more projects to be done, but then, of course, water is finite. So I mean, you know, it it would help if we have some clarification. Appreciate it.
Not a problem. I can I can let you. What is it? We've been doing this for the past five years. This is a policy that our Board of Directors put into place five years ago. They felt it was important. What we do is we waive our hookup fees to any project that has affordable, that's either affordable or has affordable component. We also do that for homeless projects. So for example, Dwayne Carissa's project in Sand Island, we waived the hookup fees for that project. And they can be somewhat substantial depending on the size of the project. So today, in the five years, we have waived close to two million dollars worth of fees. And this does help these affordable housing developers to uh be able to build these things at a cost that hopefully is more affordable. Now, we do not give this waiver until they show up on our doorstep with plans from DPP because, as we all know, um, people have come to us, all of our communities, and said, hey, we got affordable project, and we're gonna have X amount of units. And then they come back later and they say, oh, sorry, it's not penciling out, so we've cut the number of units. So we're not gonna give credit to two hundred units and then have them only offer eighty-four. So uh they have to show up with the actual number of affordable units that they're going to build, and that's only that. And then at that time, and we only give it for the affordable part, you know, they get it only for the number of units. So if it's a six hundred unit project and they have two hundred affordable units, they'll get a credit for the two hundred affordable units, which can be substantial. It'll be substantial. So uh that's that is the waiver program that Mr. Lau was talking about.
All right. Thank you for clarification. Thank you.
Very welcome, ma'am. And just so you know, uh uh Chair Welch has requested us to give you guys the same presentation at uh your meeting in September, I believe, Chair. I I believe we will be coming hopefully and doing that. I hope I hope I wasn't out of order saying that.
I was hoping you would.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Um, I think we have one final question from Ms. Mattson.
Yes, hello, Kathleen. I'd like to know what Board of Water Supply's definition of affordable is. A hundred and forty percent AMI is not affordable to low income. So is Board of Water Supply for uh supporting low income affordable, or is it uh, you know, professional income affordable?
Uh, we don't make those determinations. We that is out of our purview. We just go by whatever the DPP, whatever the state, whatever they're calling. And I I hear exactly what you're saying. Uh but we that's not for us to determine. So if somebody comes to us and says they have affordable and DPP has certified it, and they have the two oh one H and all the other permits, then we will give them the waiver. Uh but we don't make that determination. We just don't do it prior to getting the building permit. That's all we do. We just want to ensure that we're giving waivers to a truly affordable units.
Thank you, Kathleen.
That they're affordable, not depending on your definition of affordable. I know it's um, yeah, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bounces, the ball bounces back to city council and the state and the governor.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, Kathleen.
Always. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. And next we have um Dean Hoshiko from Kapilani Community College. Carolyn, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am. Okay, good evening, um Chair, members of the board. I have a very brief presentation to show you if I have share capability here.
I think you do.
Okay. Uh, just a moment. Do you see the um presentation?
It looks like a blank screen right now.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, see, here is the presentation about the Culinary Institute, uh some of the latest things that are happening. Um, this slide shows the restaurant and the auditorium. Again, you know, um I've shown these before, but each time there's a little more progress. So the um roof installation is almost complete now on the restaurant. And there are mock-up windows installed at the restaurant. Uh this next slide shows um the facility. Again, you can see a better view of the auditorium, which is the the lower left side. And the work is continuing with the installation of the mechanical, electrical plumbing and the sprinkler uh systems in both the restaurant and the auditorium. This building is the Culinary Innovation Center. It's located right next to the labs that were built in uh Phase One, which we do currently use. This one is going to be for innovation, uh creation of new products, classroom space, demonstrations and so forth. And the steel framing is being installed right now. Lastly, I believe that uh you know, there were a lot of concerns again about the um retaining wall and the incitenliness of it, but I believe they have completed now the installation of the rock veneer on the retaining walls. Uh back up to the first slide, I just uh forgot to mention that all of the work on the um walkways and leveling of the garden areas and so forth, uh and terrace gardens is complete. And that's it, Chair.
Thank you. Uh do we have questions for Dean Hoshiko? I uh I did have a question. Will um have you have you selected? um, have you, have you selected an executive director for the uh, the program yet that you know of?
Uh, they're, you know, they're in the process of it, but we haven't heard yet. Um, I'm sure that, you know, we'll probably, meaning the executive team will probably have an opportunity to interview. And that hasn't happened yet. So uh, it's still in process.
Okay, thank you. And someone live, Dylan?
Uh, Chair, just myself. Um, Ms. Hoshiko, could you please send me a copy of the uh images you just shared? Um, I put my email in the chat just for the record and for the minutes and the Google Drive for the public.
Oh, sure. I'll do that, Dylan.
Thank you.
And Kendrick, you had a question?
Um, Dean Hoshiko, I walk by your beautiful um building um all the time. And I'm always wondering, I wish I could go take classes there and learn how to cook.
Oh.
How do you, how do you go about doing that? I've taken classes at KCC, like photography and um music and stuff.
Okay.
Are we able to do that? And is the dining room still open to, to the public?
Oh, okay. Um, all right. Well, I'll answer the class question first. Uh, we do have short-term non-credit culinary classes that are offered up at that lab that was built um in Phase One. And I just previewed the um fall schedule. So that will be coming out. It's going to have a combination of cooking classes as well as some very nice baking classes, especially around the time of the holidays. Um, there'll be holiday baking. Uh, your second question, is the dining room open on our campus right now? Unfortunately not. Ever since the pandemic, you know, there just hasn't been enough um um, you know, participation and enough students on campus to actually uh have that running. So we're very sorry about that, but things should change when we get the CIP open at Diamond Head.
I see. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I asked this before when the facility was being built, but what kind of public parking will you be having?
Um, you know, there will be uh the required number of parking spaces. Um, you know, I'd have to get back to you to tell you exactly how many. But you know, there are parking spaces in the lower lots that you can see uh when you're um, walking past. And then there are some spaces that are up on the upper road that used to lead to uh the former Cannon Club site. Um, there will be some spaces up there as well. Uh, there are some EV spaces as well as handicap.
Uh, that's fine. But you know, the, the challenge with the old Cannon Club was parking and parking at the lower level, walking up to the Cannon Club. And now that I'm a lot older, it's uh, it's going to be more difficult for the elderly. And so that, that's just my concern, but.
Yes, I, I can understand what you're saying. And there is a hand, there is a handicap ramp. Believe me, I, I use a cane now, so I know. And um, in the auditorium, there will be an elevator that will take you up to the next level where the restaurant is.
Thank you. And Ms. Mattson?
I think Carol just answered my question. I was going to suggest a, an internal shuttle. But uh, if there's an elevator, that's great. Thank you.
Uh, you're quite welcome, Michelle.
Thank you so much. And we look forward to seeing you um next month then. Uh, next, we have any public announcements. This is for parades or runs or something like that, just to let us know what's happening. We know the roads are going to be closed. We know there's going to be some difficulties. That's can be posted on the website just to save time. Is there any of those at this time? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to community concerns. I'll just call everyone's attention and say this 10:50, uh, sorry, it's a what time is it now? It's 6:55. So we spent uh about 55 minutes until this point here where we're getting to community concerns, just so we're just cognizant of how much time we have. And this public testimony time is two-minute limit per person. So if someone said something and you can say, you know, Mary Smith said it very well. If you don't really need to go into it again, or whatever it is you need to say, Mary Tanaka. Uh, otherwise, um, I would ask that Vice Chair Velasco keep the two-minute um uh, time limit for us and at about one minute and 45 seconds. If you could uh let folks know to summarize, please, that would be a great help to me. Um, at this point, I have uh on this uh plan here uh for this is a survey and, and from the Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. They're not going to give a presentation. They're just going to announce what they have here and asking for our participation in a survey and ask us to look at the uh information and, and we can come back and circle with them at a later meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to our good friends at the city and Sarah Harris. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Sarah Harris. I'm the Hazard Mitigation and Long-Term Disaster Recovery Program Manager in the Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. So I'm here tonight to inform you about the city's long-term disaster recovery plan, which we're developing in collaboration with the Department of Emergency Management. So this plan will include a roadmap for how the city and our community can build back better in the months to years after a major disaster. I'll share the link to the project's website in the chat, so please check it out. Um, if you'd like more information about the plan. So as part of our planning process, we're also gathering insight from our community members across the island through a community-wide survey. We'd like to hear from you about your needs, your concerns and priorities related to disaster recovery. I'll put a link for that in the chat as well. If you could share the survey with your network and take it, we would really appreciate it. That's all I have this evening and mahalo.
Yeah, that's, I think your, your work has taken on an increased urgency just suddenly in people's minds. So I imagine you'll get some great responses from the public. Thank you for coming out today. Uh, next, we'll move on to um, first, I know there's a number of people who wanted to.
Sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
Angie, right? Uh, when does this survey close?
Sure. So the survey closes on September 4th. So plenty of time still.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that question as well. And uh, let's see then. So we have, there's a number of people wanting to talk about Diamond Head safety concerns. Again, if you have the willingness and the ability to help Margaret and the committee when they meet, especially over the long term, maybe you have some short-term in- uh interest in information, please send that to her. Know that we will not solve these problems tonight. Know that we have meetings coming up with DTS um, that we expect to move forward on. So just be cognizant of that. I would ask it as you're giving um any comments about this because we know, you know, since our last meeting, we did have a large accident that was um, fortunately didn't um have any fatalities, but could very well have on Diamond Head. So with that, I will open it up to right this moment, Diamond Head Road Safety Concerns. After that, we'll open up to other community concerns. Are there any safety, Diamond Head uh Road Safety Concerns that we wanted to bring up? Anyone? Okay, well, if you.
I, I believe, I believe that this would be a comprehensive discussion that will come up uh during our board meetings, our committee meetings, as well as with the Director of DTS. Thank you.
Yes, I wholeheartedly agree. And I think anyone who's read the paper um has just seen how fast these cars go and uh, and the news. And I, I see Kendrick there. Maybe you wanted to say something to this, uh, about this?
I think the, the benefits of um traffic calming measures um outweigh the cost. And for what I understand, um and you can correct me if I'm wrong, um Director Morton, that the city has been working with the state and the state has been able to get the costs down of the speed humps significantly. And um, I feel that it would benefit not only the, the people that live in the neighborhood, but because Diamond Head is such a um highly visited area for everyone on the island to come and do their recreation and tourists and um um, it's, it's such a high-profile monument that uh, it justifies um more safety.
Thank you. And we will be, Roger Morton is here. He'll be speaking a little bit to this a lot later. And Linda Wong?
Hi, uh, I'm unmuted. You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, I know this is unpopular position, but um I think it's the drunk drivers that are causing the accidents. And um, they're gonna drive over the traffic calming measures um and still have accidents. It's, it's not putting impediments uh in people's way uh that's going to uh save lives. Um, that's my feeling. And I've been in a drunk driving accident where everybody else in the car died except for me. So I do have a little bit invested in this area. I think it's uh the calming, the narrowing of the roads to slow down traffic. It just puts stuff in your way and uh it makes it hard to drive. Uh, if you're talking about Diamond Head Road, um, that road goes down slope by KCC and uh the Cannon Club, the old Cannon Club. And um you pick up speed to there. So you have to actually slow down at yourself and put the brakes on. I, I don't, I really don't think it's uh, we're going to be able to stop drunk driving with um traffic calming.
Thank you, Linda. Yeah, I, it's a, it's a complex question. And uh, you know, I think we'll be relying on the expertise of our um traffic safety engineers at DTS um and the community to come up with some reasonable solutions for everybody. But yeah, we're never going to get rid of the drunk drivers until we get rid of the drunk drivers. So um any other on this particular comment before we move on to other community concerns?
Uh, yes, this is uh Arlene.
Hi, Arlene.
Um, yes, uh, as a runner of the Diamond Head area, almost every morning, I see a lot of issues dealing with the, all the tour buses that go up on the lookouts. And as they back up, they oftentimes can't see the pedestrians that are behind them. I saw a ninety-some-year-old lady almost get hit. I actually had to hit the bus so he could know that she was there. So I would like the, as well as the speeding issue, I'd like the um city or state to look at that situation with all the turnouts and the tour buses and ways to solve um the pedestrians going behind the buses. I could see that if you were to make kind of a sidewalk designation, doesn't have to be a true sidewalk, around the perimeter of the turnouts, the pedestrians could go actually in front of the buses and not have to go behind.
Yeah, that's one of many good points that we need to bring up. Uh, thank you for that, Arlene. And with that, Ms. Mattson?
Thank you, Chair Welch. I um, I have a question, a concern. Uh, it involves the community as well as the board. Uh, the neighborhood board has been transferred from the floor of the room to the stage. In other words, the neighborhood board is on stage and the community is below. Uh, for many, many years, since I've been a board member for almost thirty years, we were equal. We were listening to the community at their level, not up on a stage. Also, I'm concerned about ADA. Does the stage have ADA accessibility? If not, perhaps that's why hardly any neighborhood board members are at these meetings and they're all online. So I would suggest the Neighborhood Commission Office go back to the original honored procedures, not only uh with the minutes and with the meeting time, but with the uh setting up of the meeting so that the board can be on an equal level with the community and not rising above the community. Thank you.
Okay. Well, maybe we can look at changing that around next month. I.
Chair.
No malice. Yes.
This is uh Dylan Weitzel. Uh, yeah, for those of us who actually take the time to show up here to the meetings in person, the reason for that was because all of the lights were burnt out, except for those on the stage. And so that was the only way that we could actually see and do the meeting. But we've talked about it and moving forward next month, we were actually talking about this once again before the meeting, which if people are here, they would know that we were talking about this. But we were intending on moving the tables down to the front now that the lights are fixed. But that's the reason why it was up here.
That's great. So now more board members can attend the meeting. Thank you so much.
Well, and as long as we have these hybrid meetings, I, you know, some people prefer being in the comfort of their own home for whatever reasons. Uh, I personally have a devil of a time hearing in that auditorium. Um, and uh, the, the lights have been out. So I don't think there's any malice aforethought where, where people are sitting. But let's move that down next month and, and go from there. Are there any other community concerns that we'd like to bring up at this time before we move on to our state, city government administration reports? I see someone, uh, Joni, let's get you first if you've raised your hand. You might not have. Okay.
Yes. Uh, I have another process question, and this deals with tree removal in the Diamond Head Special District. Um, we have two trees at, at our condo that are required to be removed. One for safety issues and the other one because it's, it's literally cracking the foundation of our building. Uh, the, the second tree, which is an orange tree and very visible from the street, there's no room actually in that area to plant another tree. And so based on um the revised ordinance of Honolulu twenty-one point nine, um, I'm trying to figure out who do we contact, who do we talk about permits? And what has to be done to do this properly?
Okay, perhaps our Mr. Waters can answer that when he speaks. Um, and unless you'd like to right now, Tommy? Uh, you're on mute.
Thank you. I, I don't know off the top of my head what needs to be done, what permits you need to do. But may I ask who's requiring you to do it, other than perhaps your AOAO?
Uh, looking at the revised ordinance for the Diamond Head Special District, it indicates that permits are needed and that trees need to be replaced if the tree being removed had a certain diameter uh to it. So I just wanted clarification before we go ahead and do something wrong.
I know.
Yeah, it's going to be DPP, but um Linda, if it's quick, then let's, let's hear. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, in the Diamond Head Special District, uh, if you're moving, removing a tree that can be seen from the road, any road, you have to replace the tree. And it's any tree that's over uh six inches in diameter. And if you're having a hard time, just go to DPP because they're the ones, they have a list of certain trees that you can replace the tree with. So that's the rules. It's uh, it's under Diamond Head Special District on the internet.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
And I see Dylan, someone in person there?
Yes, we do have someone in person. Could you please come up to the microphone?
Hi, um, my name is Krista Von Schae. I'm actually uh part of Congressman Ed Case's office in DC. Um, so uh, I apologize, I didn't get on the agenda earlier. Um, but I just wanted to flag that for those of you in person, I brought the congressman's neighborhood board update and it's in the front. Um, if people virtually are interested, we can get you guys a copy as well. It's on the congressman's website at case.house.gov. Um, and then within that update, I wanted to flag a couple deadlines coming up. Uh, we have the Congressional App Competition. So if you have any high school students who are really into coding, it's a great opportunity for them to develop an app and uh compete at the national level. That deadline is November first. Um, the service academies, Congressman is accepting uh applications. And to apply, students should get an application to us by Friday, October thirteenth. Um, and then uh, I am based in the DC office, but I'm our office's intern coordinator. So I always have to plug if you have a really uh bright niece or nephew at college age who would be interested in interning in the DC office. We're always looking for applications. Um, the other two things I wanted to bring up, um, on the Maui fires, uh, our office can help with uh applications for FEMA federal assistance. So if I So if any issues come up with the federal response, please do let us know. Um, and then uh, the Federal Aviation Administration has just released draft rules that could cut down on some of the overflight tour helicopter noise. Um, the public comment period is the next thirty days, so around September ninth or so, that comment period will close. But the draft rules would uh, mean that tour operators cannot fly below a hundred, uh, one thousand five hundred feet. So that's the update from us.
Thank you. And uh, my apologies that we, we haven't had, we have a question for you, I think, but I don't uh, I don't know when we stopped having uh, the congressman and our senators at the federal level on these reports. And maybe Dylan, you can help make sure that we have those on next time, uh, because we used to have them regularly, so I appreciate you coming out.
Oh, of course. This was, we didn't give you guys notice ahead of time, so.
And the, the other thing I, I probably Dylan will ask as well is, can you send him anything if you haven't already so that we can put it um, in uh, our notes? And I think there's a question from, let's just use this as a, as a point, if I might to add, Ms. Mattson probably has a question about the helicopters.
How did you know? Uh, first of all, I, I, I missed the identification of the speaker. Uh, the, this was an excellent report, very encouraging. Uh, I was uh, head of the Oahu Island Helicopter uh, group and we were constantly battling this noise and testifying and working with Ed Case. And uh, we need a copy of this in order to provide a response within the deadline. How can we get this?
Um, I'll make sure to get it to Dylan. It's an online form on the federal register and you click a link and you can add comments there.
Well, that's great, but the federal register is so extensive, uh, and we would never know where to look or how to find it, so please-
There's a specific link within the federal register.
I understand. Thank you.
And, and will you tell us your name again? I'm sorry?
Oh, my name is Krista Wunsch. I, my specialty is home and security and foreign affairs for the congressman, but I'm actually really excited, this is the first neighborhood board I've seen, so.
Okay, well, welcome. Uh, we will welcome you back every, every month if we could have you, that would be wonderful.
I second that.
Yes. Uh, are there any of the questions for the congressman's representative? Seeing none. Yes, sir?
How do you spell your last name? Krista, right?
Yes, it's uh, Wunsch, W-U-N-C-H-E.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. What was, how do you spell it?
I can get it to you.
Oh, that would be great. Oh, thank you.
Uh, Carol, do you have a question for the representatives?
Yes, a quick question. I, I missed part of what she said about the coding workshop. Did you say that was just for high school or does it include college students?
Uh, it's just for high school students.
Okay.
High school students, but it's a coding competition to create an app.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and uh, I know, Chris, I saw your hand up. I don't know if you still had a question or if it's related to this or just a general community concern?
Hello, hi, everyone. Um, I'm Chris Duker. Um, thank you, uh, Chair Welch and uh, neighborhood board members. Uh, I'm a developer here in town. My company, Form Partners, is working with another developer, High Ridge Costa Development. Uh, I wanted to just make everyone aware that we are having a town hall meeting uh, on the thirtieth. Um, our project is at twenty-seven seventy-nine Wiley Avenue, uh, really near the back door kind of of UH. And uh, while we're not within this neighborhood board, we're adjacent. And so in an effort to just be transparent and open and get as much community feedback as possible, we just wanted to make you aware uh, of the neighborhood board meeting, I'm sorry, the town hall meeting that we're having. This is Wednesday, August thirtieth from six to eight. And I'll put in the chat, we have a website, Pahoa Ridge Apartments, and that's uh, pahoa ridge dot com. And you can download the flyer, learn a little bit more about the project. Um, the meeting's gonna be at the St. Louis Alumni Association Clubhouse, Wednesday, the thirtieth from six to eight. And we hope that uh, you can all come out and uh, learn more about the project, ask questions, and um, uh, we look forward to hopefully your participation.
And I see it's been put in the chat there. Um, okay. And uh, see, Linda, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Um, can you tell me how many stories uh, the building is gonna be and how many people it's gonna house?
Uh, yeah, we have uh, two hundred and eleven uh, apartments that we've designed and they're, they're basically studios to uh, two-bedroom units. Uh, the, the height of the building is two hundred and fifty feet. Um, and I can't remember the stories right off the top of my head.
Is that twenty-five stories?
Uh, that sounds right, yes.
That's over the, isn't that over the building code for our area?
The height limit for the area is a hundred and fifty feet, and so we are seeking uh, uh, additional one hundred feet of heights through the two oh one H entitlement process. This is for an affordable uh, rental project.
All, all of the units are affordable projects for uh, for whom?
They are. Uh, as designed, we have them between, well, I don't wanna get into too much here, that's why we're having the town hall, cause we'll do a whole presentation and kinda walk through it all. But the AMI levels we're targeting are between thirty and sixty percent AMI. So that's, it's really the, truly the affordable housing.
I, I, I think the AMI is wrong when it's uh, calculated by the salary of a policeman and a registered nurse. That's pretty high.
We're not gonna solve that one tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I encourage you, please come to the town hall meeting. We'll, we'll give you all, all the details and we, there'll be plenty of time to ask questions and, and um, we, we can walk you through everything.
That's on the corner of Wiley and um-
It's kinda, it's right where Wiley, right before you cross over H one uh, to head down to Baritania. So it's just, you know where the back door to UH is when you come down Wiley before you either get on the freeway or go back to UH or cross over uh, the highway.
It's just after the storage, self-storage unit somewhere around there.
Correct. You pass both of those and as you turn, just before you get on the freeway, it's the last parcel um, on the left-hand side.
Okay, well, that's gonna be-
It's again, two seven seven nine Wiley Avenue. And again, it's pahoa ridge uh, dot com. There's information on the website and then uh, we'll have a whole lot of information and discussion at our uh, second town, town hall event.
Okay, and uh, it's like, it's a couple more questions, maybe Ms. Mattson?
Thank you, the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair. I have a question and, or I have uh, several uh, questions, comments. First of all, uh, are the small, are the affordable homes going to be destroyed in that area? Does this consume those parcels?
On the parcel now, uh, it's a, it's mostly vacant. There is a small uh, six-unit building that is on there now. Uh, those six units, uh, obviously when we, when we, if we're, if we do receive our approvals and we, we build, uh, those six units will be torn down, they'll be displaced.
Okay, uh, the other thing is uh, thirty to sixty percent AMI, that's really commendable. Uh, the city council needs to pay attention to this instead of awarding projects to deep-pocket developers who can pay their own way but are taking city, are taking taxpayer funds to build their high rises such as Kobayashi. Thank you, Councilmember Waters, for listening in. Uh, and as far as your-
Two oh one H project, um-
Yeah, two oh one H is-
It's the same, it's the same law that Chris Duker is using as Kobayashi did. Which, by the way, created six hundred and four portable units. I give Chris a lot of credit for doing thirty to sixty percent AMI.
I do too, and thank you very much.
I'd like to see more developers doing exactly what he's doing.
Exactly, except there is a violation of the zoning regulations.
Well, no, actually, if you look at two oh one H, this is a state law, by the way, and I'd like you folks to address this to your state lawmakers as well because-
Absolutely.
Two oh one H is a state law that waives all of the, waives ordinances, waives statutes. And by the way, there's an emergency proclamation that I see on your calendar and I hope I didn't miss that because it further waives zoning laws, folks. It waives zoning laws, which, by the way, so does two oh one H.
Right.
It can, well, and-
And this is devastating to our communities and your council district. And so I'd like to continue with, with my questions. Uh, the, the, the most important one is, thank you so much uh, for presenting this to us tonight. Uh, we're, we really are interested in this. The height limit is a serious concern. Uh, the zoning regulation is one fifty, you're going way over that. Uh, these are the views of the COOLAs that are being impacted. However, uh, we'd like to know, for those of us who cannot cram into a little room, is this going to be online where we can ask questions and provide information?
No, um, actually, right now, we do not have plans for it to be online. Um, that's one thing we will look into, uh, to see if we can do that. Um, I don't have an answer for you, but let me check into that. Someone else have requested that recently. I, I would say, Michelle, too, one thing is, you know, thank you for saying that and I appreciate the fact that, um, you know, in Honolulu, everybody, obviously, we, we need affordable housing at all levels. And while we are striving to do this at thirty to sixty percent, I would, I would tell you that I'm a big believer that we need housing at all AMI levels. It's not just the thirty to sixty. And we certainly need a, as much of that as we can get, but in order to do that thirty to sixty, we have to be able to get state and federal tax credits and bonds and, and those are limited. So there's only, we're only ever gonna get so many of that thirty to sixty percent AMI in Honolulu. And if we're really gonna get out of this housing crisis, we do need projects like what the Kobayashis are doing. We do need projects at all levels because there's just a limited amount of funds that are available to make these projects that are thirty to sixty. So I know it's easy, you know, I know it's, we want more lower, but I commend, I know that's a tough project, but I would say, you know, we need housing and um-
Well, that's exactly my point because the Kobayashis at all are sucking up the money for the well-meaning developers such as you.
Sure, actually, that's a-
Point of order, Chair.
Yeah, let's uh, live and move on.
Yeah, we did have a time limit, but um, could we move on to a first-time speaker on the topic?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This will come up before the Planning and Zoning Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and let's, by all means, have your uh, committee meeting about this because this was just an announcement really of this meeting, so thank you. Uh, Dylan, is there somebody else there who wanted to say something?
Yes, Member Angie Knight.
Hi, thank you so much for coming and telling us about the town hall. I just had a quick question, and I don't know if you said this earlier, so forgive me if you did. Is this for rental or is it for purchase?
These are for rental. Uh, and, and we'll, we'll dig into this more at the, at the town hall meeting and I encourage you to come. We are actually looking to entitle this project three ways because of the, the fact I talked about the limited funds earlier. There's various funding sources for different AMI levels. And what we are looking at doing through the two oh one H, which we've done on other projects, is to allow for multiple executions. And we are committed to uh, you know, pursuing the thirty to sixty percent. But if we're unable to get funds for that, we're also gonna look at eighty to a hundred percent AMI. And if we're unable to get funds on any of those, ultimately, we would look to do a for-sale product. But there's, there's a whole lot of details to get into. I encourage you to come to the town hall. There's a lot of time we can walk through and explain exactly what it is we're doing and why. But our intent is to do, and our focus is to do, for rent affordable and thirty to sixty first. And if we can't get the funds after a couple of applications, then we would go to the eighty to a hundred. And if we can't get the funds, then we would do a for-sale.
Okay, thank you.
May I say one thing, Chair?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, I, I really wish you guys, and since you only have a few people, um, if you can incorporate the people that are already living there, that don't get put out on the street and they're at such a low level that they can't find any place, so they're displaced. If you could do something I, like that, I think you would be looked at with a much better eye.
Appreciate that. We are gonna work, we're off, we're gonna give the tenants six months of notice and six months of free rent, and then we're also gonna work with them to help them relocate. And to the extent we can get them within our project when it's completed, we'd love to have that. It's just a challenge sometimes because there's a two-year construction period, so, but we're gonna do everything we can to uh, get them in the building, for sure.
Well, I'm sure you can figure out something.
Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. And for those of you who want to hear more about this, uh, the Planning and Zoning Committee will probably hear something as well as August thirtieth, six PM at uh, the alumni, uh, St. Louis Alumni Room, is that correct?
Yes, uh, the clubhouse.
Okay, and that's over in the chat as well. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Uh, thanks, everyone.
Being cognizant, those communities' concerns took thirty minutes. Okay, we're at twenty-five past the hour and I will invite um, our representative from the state administration governor's representative tonight, if we have someone here. I think they're probably fairly tied up with all of the work on Maui. Um, however, I did see uh, and probably same State Department of Transportation, I don't think that we have anyone that showed up tonight. We will continue to keep them on the uh, agenda for next meeting. Let's move on to the mayor's-
Mr. Chair, regarding the State Department of Transportation, uh, Ed Sniffin is a key. He's the director of State DOT, is very familiar with the uh, traffic calming measures. We have asked that he attend the meeting with, uh, that uh, um, John Morton is, uh, I'm sorry, Roger Morton is calling. And uh, he's a key uh, resource. And so I think having this on our agenda right now at this time is critical. If, if they're willing to come, they're obviously on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please remind me of that if uh, uh, as the next agenda approaches. Um, then I will invite the mayor's representative, if someone is available from the mayor's office.
Yes, Chair Welch, Anton Kruckey, Director, Department of Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Kruckey. Please go ahead.
Yes, um, I'm sorry that I had to leave the meeting. Uh, last time I was Dylan kinda covered for me on that one, I was waiting to also, I had a TV thing on homelessness that I was trying to do. I was trying to hang in there as long as I could. Um, this month, the mayor, he um, he wanted to let you know that he's entered into an agreement with Matt Levy Security to add the security in the Waikiki area. Um, I think that this special security team along with our HPD um, continues to do efforts. HPD has to follow certain protocols, the security teams can do some other things. So he continues to keep um, safety as a, as an issue that's important to him and the Safe and Sound Program. Um, all the numbers in Waikiki are, are coming down. Um, so we're doing well there, I think. The mayor also wanted to let you know that um, that Gina Bono is gonna be uh, the Department of Facility Managers' new director. He was confirmed this week. And he's also added um, uh, Dita Hollyfield to join the Department of Enterprise Services. Those are the folks that have the zoo and the, and Blaisdell and, and all of that. She has a long kinda uh, radio uh, and, and programmatic experience as she's had. You might have known her as a DJ on ninety-seven point five Honolulu country station. So anyway, she's, she's a lively person, uh, I think is a great addition to our cabinet team. Um, Skyline had its first months of ridership. They saw over a hundred and seventy thousand riders. I know that that's been in the paper. Um, they're waiting to see the impact of schools and what that will have in ridership. But you know, the, the rail is still limited in, in the areas that it serves. So I, I think that really getting it to the airport and beyond will, will make a difference in, in the impact that it can have. Um, as was mentioned earlier, the uh, Governor Josh Green on July seventeenth signed an emergency proclamation uh, on affordable housing and uh, trying to um, reduce the time, if you will, not the quality, but reduce the time it takes to um, get developers to be able to get approved to build. Um, I know you have another presentation that gives another view later in the, in the program, so that's good because you gotta look at it from all the ways. I do agree with the comment that was made that you need all kinds of housing. Um, I work on affordable housing, my, my, those are my programs, but we need housing of all kinds in the city. Uh, it, you get stymied if you don't, if people can't move on and leave a fixer-upper behind for somebody to move into, right? The, that process that, uh, ma- many, many of you have been in. I know that's how I got started. Um, we have worked really hard to keep people housed that have been- We have worked really hard to keep people housed that have been having rent problems. We've had the Rent Utility Relief Program, and we continued it. We were very successful. We were one actually in execution with one of the top executing cities in the country in that program, and we extended it. But what we tried to also do is, is where it was difficult people to go online and get into that system, we went around to eight different locations around the island and, and let people apply personally, right? And so in doing that, we were able, uh, we've gotten over twenty-five million dollars out to six hundred families on Oahu that have showed up at these events. So it's been very successful. Um, I also would mention that if you know somebody or are part of somebody that's in a nonprofit, and during the pandemic, they suffered losses, we've had one tranche where people could apply for, uh, relief from that. Now we've kind of made it a little bit easier for people to apply. We have a second tranche. So please go to one at wahoo dot org and, um, one at wahoo dot org and, and check that out. If you, if your financial statements show you had a loss, it's, it's money you can get, and it's very, um, dynamic in the fact that it's not scripted like a grant or something, right? So you can use it anywhere. Also, the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services, Real Property Tax, uh, wants everybody to know that the, there is a program where, um, the, 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 we've taken action where the city council took to increase the income level for this program from sixty thousand to eighty thousand dollars. So that can help you. This twenty thousand dollar increase, uh, in these exemptions will allow you to, uh, large number of own homeowners apply for this credit, uh, who had incomes over the previous sixty thousand dollar limit. Uh, you do need to apply for this credit. The tax credit applications are now available on, uh, honolulu.gov treasury and at all city, uh, satellite city halls. And flyers with more in- information are on the sign-in table. And, uh, you, you need to be able to do this application. Uh, it closes on October second. So please get those applications in. If you qualify for the credit, the credit will be applied to your property tax bill that you received July of twenty twenty-four. Also, Bill Forty, um, C D ones, F D ones, recently signed into law by the mayor, increases the home, uh, exemption amount for homeowners under the age of sixty-five from one hundred thousand to one twenty, hundred and twenty thousand, and for owners of sixty-five years of age or an older, a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty thousand. Persons filing for home exemption should provide verification of age, such as driver's license or birth certificate. A home exemption is granted based on seniority of age for all owners on a claim of record. This exemption will take effect on July first, two thousand twenty-four, and will continue each tax year unless there is a change in affecting eligibility. Um, you can, you can, uh, check this out. Visit realpropertyhonolulu.com, and, uh, you can file there for your home exemption, or you can download a claim form. And claim forms may be hand-delivered or mailed also, uh, to, to the R P A D office. And I don't even know what that means, but that makes it bad. So I, what I would do is I'd go to realpropertyhonolulu.com and check that out. Yeah, I'm in the city, but I haven't always been in the city. It's okay. Um, so you want to do those applications. Earlier in the program, the Board of Water Supply was talking about the rate programs. Um, I think it's important to know that the Board of Water Society is gonna present, uh, these critical issues. There'll be three meetings in August that your community can attend. So Monday, August fourteenth, at the, at the Benjamin Parker Elementary School from six to eight thirty P M. Tuesday, August fifteenth, at the Japanese Cultural Center from six to eight thirty P M. And Wednesday, August sixteenth, the Kapalai Halei from six to eight thirty, uh, P M. So come if you're interested in that. And they'll, they'll be able to present and answer some of the questions that you were asking, um, her earlier. So also, I wanted to, to tell you that we're going to, although it's not exactly in this, in this district, we're gonna start, um, populating Waikiki Vista on Kapilani Boulevard. And so we, we're working it out where we can, uh, we'll have a stabilization and housing preparation, uh, thing going on there with the service provider, and then people will be able to graduate into permanent supportive housing. And then the rest of the building is going to be probably workforce housing. We'll have a property manager that we'll select shortly, and then we'll start populating that building. It's good for workforce housing as well, uh, as, uh, permanent supportive housing. Um, in terms of issues that were brought up from Dylan's note, the squeaky swing. A resident requested that the swing at Paki Park, we replayed Paki Park, we repaired it, as it's very noisy. And, um, it, on the D P R, looked at this, and on seven nineteen, the staff lubricated all four swings at the park, and we'll continue to monitor as needed. Almost done here. So, uh, speeding on Campbell Avenue, I think this answer will, will also apply to the discussion that was going on about Diamond Head Road and such. So the Department of Transportation Services will perform an investigation, which will include site inspection, speed study, and a review of the traffic collision history, and take appropriate action as warranted by their analysis. The board will be apprised, apprised of the status of this investigation by March twenty-fourth. Um, I think that maybe I'll put in diamond notes to request, uh, Diamond Head Road as well for that process. Um, the Campbell Stop and Shop, resident reported a sign fronting a store, three, three, six, eight Campbell Avenue, stating parking only for Campbell Stop customers. Um, the D T S, they went and they completed an investigation fronting, uh, three, three, six, eight Campbell Stop. At the time of the inspection, D T S could not find the parking-only sign. So, um, with that, though, they did find absurdly defaced one-hour parking sign, and they'll have that replaced. Uh, a work order has been issued for that, work order two, eight, four, seven, nine, and facility maintenance will, um, replace that defaced sign. Um, that's the end of my report. I'll take on other, uh, issues that you have, and I'd be glad to, to do that. Thank you for having me tonight. I really appreciate it.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Kruckey. So I guess the squeaky squing does get oiled, and so we will bring proverbial squeaky squings to you here, and appreciate your, um, you know, really concerted efforts in getting to something as, as a squeaky squing. That's obviously was irritating to the person, as are the large issues. Um, we have a couple of questions for you. I see Ms. Merchi.
Thanks, Anton. You're, you're doing a great job. One of the things that was brought up at the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, and I think Tommy was, you know, he's instrumental in trying to get a cap on these parades and block parties that are really impacting our tr- you know, our quality of life or even, you know, every, everyone. You can't get anywhere when there, you know, there's, um, traffic jams that I, either corner by the Hilton or at our end by, you know, the police station. One of the things that was brought up was that maybe these promoters should be paying, you know, apply for a permit and pay for traffic control. The police love that suggestion.
I'll bring that up to Roger and talk to him about that.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it, because there's too many, and people, you know, they're just, they're jumping in the intersection. So you've got gridlock on either side, and nobody can get, and then the signage and all of that, and it's really, it's too much.
Thank you.
I, I don't know. Tommy can probably tell you how many parades and block parties there are this month, but I think in March, there were like nine, and that's every weekend.
Okay, I got Dylan making sure. I got that.
Thanks.
I'm Roger.
Those, those comments are really good. I, I, what I try to do also is listen. If, if I get bulks of comments, I'll go and see if I can get that directed or come directly talk with you. It's like, you know, when we had Laiahe Avenue, I had the M D and Roger here, and then I brought Roger back. We are gonna have the, uh, uh, Parks and Recs, um, group that works with trees and everything. I'm gonna have her come by, uh, at one of these meetings and be able to present so she can take all your questions on.
Well, it looks like Roger's here, and it looks like he's standing in front of a green screen or something, but he's got a sunburn, I think.
He's been, he's been a great friend to this board. He really.
He's the best. No, we, I agree. I just giggling about.
Thank you, Margaret. And, and as we go with our elected officials, I think we can, although that was a unique request, I think a lot of the things we probably discussed tonight and or, and in many years past or months past, we can assume that our elected representatives have heard it before. So if we can be as succinct as possible, knowing that we have a couple of presentations coming up, that would be most useful. And a lot of these things, obviously, are not gonna be solved in any one time, but, uh, any succinctness is most appreciated. Daisy, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Um, this regards the, um, the Bayyard. You mentioned that the Bayyard at the Alawai Golf Club, um, course would be used to, um, start the bridge, the Alawai Bridge. But according to Deputy Director Michael Keat at the Neighborhood Board for Macalimoo Eeli Eeli, mentioned that it's a base yard to be used to repair the roof of the, uh, clubhouse. Does that mean that the bridge would be used after that project is completed?
You know, I don't really have any detailed information on, on that. Um, I can always give you an update on the bridge. I think this, this board is probably more depth, uh, on the bridge than even I am. But I have followed the comments, and I followed all the emails on it, so, you know.
Okay, the other question is, since Doctor, um, Director Morton's on, this question has to do with not enough public information, media, to let people know that our August twentieth, the bus number two, which is School Street to Kahala Mall or to, um, K C C would be changing. Uh, the, unless you go to the bus stop, you don't know that the bus route is gonna change to go up Campbell and down. My question is, why not enough information? And also, why are we changing it to go up and down Campbell when it was number two L to Kahala was perfect as it went up through, um, Montserrat from Waikiki? So the tourists can also get dropped off at the Diamond Head, um, monument, et cetera. Even the bus drivers are confused.
Roger, Roger, you wanna take that on right now? So answer the question, uh, while she asks, Roger?
I could try. I, I'm not really gonna be very good at, at that, even though I ran the bus for many years. Uh, I know that we're making some changes. I believe that what we're doing is we're taking some of the buses, uh, that we found that we had actually too much service that was going all the way to Kahala Mall. And I think that we're, we're actually splitting some service so that it goes down to Montserrat as well, as it used to go down there. Uh, but be, be, beyond that, uh, Anton, I, I'm, I'm really, uh, John, John, my deputy, has been running, uh, that, that change. Uh, and, uh, I think that I, I'll have to get back to the, to the committee and, or to, to, you know, to, to give a good answer on that. But what we've been trying to do has been, number two is, the number two line is our second or third, uh, highest-used line in the system. Uh, and we have been very successful when we, we, we extended the two L portion, first portion of the line to Kahala Mall. Uh, we're trying to balance the two L and the regular two. That's, that's the intent, uh, of what we're trying to do. And I'm, I'm not sure exactly on the issue of the Campbell Avenue two-way, uh, of, of why we're, uh, doing that. But I'll be happy to find that out and, and get back to, to the, you know, that question.
I, I use the two L. It's great to go to, um, Kahala Mall. It saves a lot of time. And then, of course, a lot of tourists are taking the twenty-three, twenty-four to get to Diamond Head, so two L works great. But the question is, it doesn't go from the zoo to Diamond Head anymore. It's to Campbell Avenue anymore. It's gonna change by going on Campbell, uh, Kapalua Avenue, then turn up on Campbell, and then make a left turn at Campbell and Montserrat. Now, the portion that services the people by the zoo will be, uh, this will be not able to catch that number two bus anymore.
They still have the twenty-three, though, right?
Um, I'm thinking about number two would circle around to the zoo area and then come back to Waikiki, but it's very confusing. I would also let you know that the public needs to know because when people find out, oh, guess what? The bus doesn't go here anymore. They're gonna be so confused.
And we, and we can always do a better job of trying to communicate. It's very difficult. We do send all the alerts to all the neighborhood boards. Uh, we put them, obviously, we put them at the bus stops that are involved. We, we put changes on the, uh, on the buses, and we all give references to our webpage where they get a comprehensive description of exactly what's going on. Uh, we make numerous changes every four months, every three months. Uh, and it's, it's, it's very difficult to try to get it out. Sometimes we'll do press conferences. Uh, but, uh, we really do our best in trying to disseminate it, uh, as best we can through our timetable distribution, through our, uh, webpage, uh, through our, you know, material on the buses and at the bus stops.
Yeah, miss, make a suggestion, do a press release because the whole public don't know. And also, why is that certain times, like, there's two or three or four number one buses going to Kahala Mall within ten minutes, going to the, um, terminus? Um, it has to be scheduled a lot better.
Yeah, I believe it runs every eleven minutes, and I, and I think it could probably run, uh, a little, a little differently myself.
I appreciate it, but let the public know. Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy. And we had another question, maybe, uh, for Mr. Kruckey from, uh, Mr. Decker.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yeah, I just was wondering about the, uh, Rental Assistance, uh, Program. Um, when are families denied? I mean, uh, let's say they apply and they get approved every year. Is there a dollar amount where the, you know, uh, where they say, oh, this family got X amount? It's denied, or how does that?
Well, it's a certain amount of months.
I see.
So that they have time to make a transition.
I got it. So it's based on a time frame. It's not a dollar amount.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And, uh, Michelle, did you have something?
I did, too. Thanks. Thank you. Uh, Director Kruckey and also Director Morton, I echo the thoughts of, of your being absolutely, uh, stellar representatives, uh, to report to our board. Roger, we've known each other for a long time, uh, since you were manager of the, uh, Oahu, was it, well, Oahu Transit Services, the bus line. And I believe it was the best in the nation, as it was, uh, reported. And, and now we have real po- problems because of all of these shifts and reversions and revisions. Uh, Anton, uh, you mentioned a new director for, is it, uh, Department of Facilities Managers?
Yes, Gina Bono.
And I'm hoping that Warren Momazuki is still the Deputy Director. He is also stellar.
He is awesome, and he is still Deputy Director.
Thank you, and he has been helping us a lot with Diamond Head Road. And, uh, I, I believe that, that might be all, uh, w- w- we really need to work with Roger on Diamond Head Road as well as Laiahe Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Knight?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I had a question. When you were talking about, I know you said it wasn't in our district, but the Waikiki Supportive Workforce Housing, is that in development or is it?
No, that's, Waikiki Vista was where Tokyo University was.
Okay.
And so we bought that building. So now the, the students have finished their semester at the end of the year. They're moving out. And we're going to, we need to repopulate the building. Was the whole reason for purchasing it.
Okay, so the building exists. You're just repurposing it now? That it's under?
Yeah, just renting all the rooms and utilizing it, right?
Wait, where was it? So sorry.
Renting all the rooms?
No, I said, where was it exactly?
Oh, it's on Kapilani Avenue, Tokai, Tokai University.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next to Marco Polo.
Thank you.
Yeah, next to Marco Polo.
Chair, we have one more question from Decker.
Uh, yeah, so I did hear about, back to that building. Um, it, now I heard that was gonna be a temporary spot for the administration. Is that for housing or is that for the, uh, administration while the, um?
Well, there, there's, there, that was discussed. Right now, that's not in the plans.
Okay.
Uh, there, there's, um, Honolulu Halei has a, has a lot of needs for some refurbishing.
Sure, that's what I heard.
And so, so they were thinking of temporarily maybe moving the seat of government there, but I, that is not in the plans right now, but something has to be done about that.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, just heard about it. I didn't know if the traffic was gonna get bad in that area because of the.
Right, but we're not doing that right now.
Okay, thank you so much.
And the traffic has to sort of, you think about it, however we populate the building, the traffic patterns are gonna stay the same because you have a certain amount of parking stalls. So that's all the traffic that can come and go, right? Yeah.
No.
Well, uh, Mr. Kruckey, I, I, if there's no more questions for you, I, I did.
I have one.
To bring up. Uh, go ahead, Linda.
Um, I wanted to know if there's any other place on island that's getting built up as much as Moili Eili and, and our Neighborhood Board. Um, it seems like everything's around here, and if we could go out more instead of up, then we could, would not be caught in this, uh, Ferris wheel, like we're all mouses going around in a circle. Uh, I have to disagree with the traffic scenario you just said. Um, you know, with the complete streets and narrowing the roads, and we're just stuck in a quagmire.
Well, the traffic studies have to be done when people are developing a new building. I was really talking about an existing building with an existing infrastructure.
I know where this is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Bruce Wong? Okay, thank you. And Bruce Wong?
You know, I have a comment about the property tax credit that will be given to us. The property tax credit doesn't make sense if the property if the property assessment system isn't changed. Because all it does, you change the property assessment system, well, the property assessment system just drives up the cost of our property, the value of our property, and then it drives up our property taxes. And then you give us, you give us an exemption which doesn't really match up. Everything just stays the same. Everything just keeps going up. My focus is to repair the property I have so that my grandchildren can take over. I've said this before many times. But the property assessment system needs to change. And so what California has, I hope politicians will look into Proposition 13 that California has because it'll, it'll base your property taxes on what you paid for your property and it cannot force you out. Now, I know that California, the property taxes go up one to one and a half percent a year, but they can't dramatically drive it up to some crazy 10, 20% amount. And so if in the neighborhood board, if we push for this, I think we can hold back all this development that's squeezing in. Now, the development is coming in right next to UH. I mean, that'll make our Kapole Kamaki area look more like Makiki. And so you got a 25-story building in our area again. And that's right across from the Contessa. I mean, it just will start to look like Makiki. And I don't know if everybody else on the board wants that. I don't want it. That's just my comment. So I'm just hoping that Tommy Waters is listening and the people on the that work with him can do something about the property tax assessment system that we have currently have.
I think that Chair Waters is, they had a really robust conversation about that this week and in council and, you know, having a system today and kind of making adjustments for people's benefit. You know, without looking at the whole system, our budget finance, Budget and Fiscal Services Director Andrew Juano said we really need to study that. You know, we have a system that was devised some time ago for a world that we're in today. So I get that.
Thank you, Mr. Kruckey. And I just have a perennial question about how we could find another place for the the base yard that's across from the library in front of the Alawai Clubhouse that you came to tonight. It just looks, it just looks trashy, honestly, just the orange netting up for years and years and years. We just need to find that's, it's a, it's a, I mean, it's an industrial property that's not supposed to be there. So whatever we can do, maybe the city has something out in Kapole or I don't know, somewhere else where it would be appropriate. That's, that's the entrance to Waikiki. It's our neighborhood. It's not an industrial zone. So whatever we can do to get rid of that, maybe you and I can put our heads together or something. So and just to be cognizant of time, we have about an hour left. So if you want to hear the presentation from Sierra Club, if you want to hear the presentation from Oceanit, I will ask you to be very succinct with our representatives coming up, including Mr. Morton, knowing that we are going to discuss these topics later with him in a group and he's cognizant of the issues that are going on as well. And just to curtail his time. With that, I think that we might be able to move on. No?
Question.
Go ahead.
Comment and question, property taxes. There was a mainland investor who bought a house in a neighborhood. He paid a million dollars over asking price. That escalated everybody's property taxes. The residents, the longtime residents need to be considered, not the offshore investors. And this is a serious issue. With the property taxes escalating like this, this is why people are moving away, not because of anything else, not because there are not enough high rises, 400 feet buildings. It's because of property taxes and the cost of living here that is caused to escalate by people who have not been longtime residents. And the city council has greased things through. We do not appreciate this. And we are certainly going to be at the forefront of the next debate. Thank you.
Okay. And we appreciate you coming, Mr. Kruckey. We know you have a lot of boards to attend to. You and Mr. Morton are excellent public servants. We appreciate your time very much.
Mahalo.
And with that, we will move to Mr. Morton. If you have some summary for us that we could go on and then maybe that will answer most questions that people might have.
Sure, let me try a little bit on the block parties and things that the city supports efforts by the council to, to figure out a way that we, where we can control a little bit better and reduce the number. I think primarily the issue for us is not the parades, but it is the block parties that that jam up Waikiki. They do seem to be about once a month or more. And we are, we are poised to, to look at that. I know my office has worked, has reached out to council members and I think council is probably going to take the lead on this. But we will support a reasonable resolution of the problem. Similarly, for RPZ, restricted residential parking zones, we're working with the council on a ordinance that would allow us to have more. We have a successful RPZ in Kaliki Valley. And we are working on trying to figure out a better way that we can work it out now. From our perspective, an RPZ needs to have an external reason why we're doing it. In other words, we're not going to have in places where parking is at a high demand because there's not enough parking on the streets. We don't want to set up a resident versus resident who can pay the most to get a parking spot on the street. But if there's an external influence that's causing particular problems in a neighborhood, that's personally where I think an RPZ makes the most sense. We've started work on a huge project. You won't really see it too much, but we're going to be replacing all of our traffic signal controllers throughout the island. We're going to be replacing them. Our controllers are very old and frankly obsolete. We're going to be replacing them with state-of-the-art future-proof controllers that ultimately will be able to do vehicle to, vehicle to, to traffic signals, be able to do adaptive traffic signals in other more advanced ways so that we can improve our traffic situation. And we're doing that islandwide and we're doing it in cooperation with Ed Sniffin. So it's not, there are 700, more than 700 city intersections that are signalized, more than 200 state intersections that are signalized. We're going to do this as a joint procurement, probably over the next four or five years and work very closely with Ed on that. Obviously, Diamond Head Road has come up a lot with after that horrific accident that occurred a few months, about a month ago. It just sort of underscored that. In that particular case, that was, it was late, late at night or early morning. There were six people. There was alcohol involved. There was speeding involved. You know, we are going to have a meeting with, we've invited representatives of the community to come meet with our traffic engineers, meet with us and primarily in a brainstorming session to see if we can come to some common things. I know everybody likes traffic humps. I like them myself. They're physical. They do stop people. They slow people down. They're not necessarily appropriate everywhere. Where there are grains, where there are curves, there are issues that need to be worked out in those types of places. I could go on. I mean, we won a $25 million raise grant for our Alapono Bridge. I know that's not necessarily the most popular bridge for this group, but I'm proud of our folks that we won a big tranche of federal money to make that go forward. We're hoping to get that done in, you know, in the, in the near future. We've been working with the Army Corps of Engineers to make sure that anything we do is consistent with the Army Corps' project, which will have much, much more impact, I think, on the, on the, the community than our bridge will. We're also, you know, I hope everybody has gotten to Ride Skyline. It's not going to help you guys out in Diamond Head, but at least I think it would be really great to come and just ride it and, and see what, what kind of, how the ride is and how the technology is. It's really a, it's really a system that's made for our west side to help get them into town. I don't think it's going to be, you know, we're going to have to wait for four or five years or six years until we really get it into town, but we are, as you know, we're making progress going down, going down the road on that. We're making improvements. We're buying some vans. We've just got some vans delivered for our handy van. It's been an issue for other communities. Not sure if Diamond Head is one of them, but we're committed to making our handy van system work better than we have had it working. And finally, I just give a shout out to the DOE. They, they're short of school bus drivers, but they've, they've come through and they've offered a new program where every high school student on Oahu will be offered the opportunity to get a free bus pass. After that, happy to answer any questions. I would say I was never officially invited to this meeting. I did see my name on the agenda. I came and I'm happy to be here, but you guys, you know, I don't, I can't come to all the neighborhood boards every time and I hope everybody does that. We are inviting, we are inviting a group from, from this area to come and just, I wanted to do it at our offices because, you know, my, I can't get five or six engineers to come out to a meeting like this and we really need to spend a couple of hours just brainstorming rather than trying to just answer questions on a, on a video screen.
Thank you, Director Morton. And that's my apologies. I mentally sent you an invitation. And sometimes it doesn't quite get through, so my apologies on that.
I'm happy to be here. Just, you know, usually my secretary said, you know, you're not officially invited.
I'm, well, we're, you know, we're looking forward to meeting with you at the end of the month and thank you for gathering the folks together. And I see there's someone in person. Dylan?
Yes, Decker. Hi, Roger, I just got a question about the rail. Do you know if the rail employs face recognition technology for the riders? Is that something that you heard of?
Well, we don't, I mean, we have, we have one of the most sophisticated video systems in the world. We've had people from other airports even like Liberty Airport in New Jersey that have flown here just to look at our system. So it's got about 1,600 cameras. They're all live cameras. In each rail car, there are 44 cameras. There are, there is artificial intelligence built into the system. So that if somebody does, if somebody does a behavior like leaves a bag, a backpack on a, on a platform and walks away from it, our system will alert that and bring it to the attention of the system control operator, consult, console operator. It'll follow the person that left the bag and it will keep track of the bag until the issue is resolved. So it's a very sophisticated system. We're not using face recognition at this time, though.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that, that sounds good. I mean, for the amount of money we put into it, the technology matches the amount. Thank you.
Thank you. And for, again, for those interested in discussing the traffic safety issue, I refer you to Margaret Merchi and she can gather your questions, comments, and also if you're willing to participate. And Ms. Mattson?
A last comment regarding the Blight Line. I don't call it Skyline. I call it Blight Line. The property taxes, are we going to have an increase in property taxes because of the Blight Line? Not just because of offshore investors?
Well, for construction, all of the, none of the construction money except for a very small marginal part comes from the city. It comes from the get tax, the local get tax.
Thank you.
We're paying for it anyway.
And Director Morton, thank you for coming tonight. I know that I've heard from a number of residents who are interested in, you know, how we can make our, reclaim our neighborhood from, you know, I, the last chair, I mentioned the word revenge speeding on Leahy when we had that problem because people, when they couldn't go, they were going very fast. And I think maybe we have some revenge speeding from COVID. I don't know what's going on, but it's not unique to Honolulu. You're seeing this, you know, nationwide, but whatever we can do together to come up with some innovative solutions, maybe that don't, that aren't in the normal city parameters, we'll really appreciate just taking a different look at this and saying, how could we make this neighborhood a model perhaps for the rest of the city as well? Just common sense solutions that we can kick around, but we appreciate your open mind and bringing folks together and really look forward to a productive discussion. So thank you again for being here tonight. Okay.
Chair, Dylan here.
Yes, sir.
Just want to remind her for the time, we have less than an hour. We do have significant items and we have our elected officials that we haven't gotten to yet. If the questions can be answered or can be questioned offline, all of their information is public. You can contact their office. We should get through this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, that's, that's also up in the, if you would see the top of the agendas, it's been slightly revised just to address exactly something like that. If you can directly contact, if you have a question about something that doesn't need to involve everybody, please do use the chat feature or call someone directly. With that, I would like to move on to Mr. Kobayashi, Representative Kobayashi, if you're here.
Good evening.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, the big item is the wildfires, particularly on Maui. Tomorrow, State House will be meeting in majority caucus. The main topic will likely be which committee will be responsible as lead, lead committee for wildfires. It either, it would be a current standing committee or a special committee to be the lead. Other than that, you have my report, four pages, talking about hiker needing rescue in Diamond Head, about the atomic bomb ceremonies which were held last week for, I'm sorry, which were held this week for Hiroshima and Nagasaki and also some help for those, for those who need computer literacy. Free help available through the state library system. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Kobayashi, and thanks to all our representatives that we didn't get to last month. We've reordered you so that you hopefully will get always before any presentations. And you're of course welcome to stay for the presentations because they may be germane to, you know, issues that you have, but anyway, thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Kobayashi? Okay, thank you. And Representative Sayama, will you?
Thank you, Chair. Okay, I'll make it quick. Last time we spoke, I believe I mentioned that there would be a town hall for the St. Louis Heights residents regarding a possible disc golf recreational activity at Waikiki Lake Park. Unfortunately, there has been a scheduling error and the town hall we were supposed to have in September, we're trying to reschedule it maybe sometime in October. The disc golf organizations leaders weren't able to make it to that date. So again, I'll keep the residents of St. Louis Heights posted about this as I understand it. It is an important issue for the community. And one other thing, we did have the sister summit for Japan and Hawaii, state and city relationships. And this is extremely successful involving, I think, six governors, seven including Hawaiians and 17 mayors from Japan coming to Hawaii to discuss future relationships and business opportunities between our communities. So hopefully, you know, I hope to be able to branch off from that and really empower Kamaki small businesses to sell their products to the Japanese market. But with that, I'll be sending out a newsletter later this month, which includes some safety tips regarding disaster preparedness. So please take note of that. And I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Representative Sayama? Okay, you got a thumbs up. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Next, we have if there's a representative from Stanley Chang's office?
Hi, everyone. So
Hi, everyone. So I'm gonna put some links in the chat. First is our August newsletter on Senator Chang's website. Also have our constituent postcard if you'd like to fill that out. And if you'd like to sign up for that housing newsletter, the link is in the chat. And then for some updates, last month Governor Green signed Bill, Senate Bill 1254, which starts the process for Kaevi Coast to become a state park, and that will preserve and conserve three hundred forty acres of natural land on the east side of Oahu. And then for Diamond Head, four million dollars in CIP money is secured for rockfall and flood mitigation. And so hopefully that will help make the Diamond Head State Monument a better place to visit and to hype for everyone who's going out there in the summer months. And then I believe Senator Ihara mentioned this in the chat already, but the Senate will be convening in special session on August twenty first and twenty second to confirm judges. I'm here to answer any questions.
Yes, I would invite you to stay around for the presentation that we have later, since I know Senator Chang's been a prime supporter of the emergency proclamation. Are there other questions that we have now for Senator Chang's office?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to ask one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are Senator Chang's person, can we see them in the live or is the camera off?
I believe the camera was off, but.
Oh, I'd like to request that people that come to our meeting need their cameras on, at least while they're speaking. Thank you.
Okay, and someone there, Dylan?
No, just a comment. We can't force anyone to do so, and a lot of times it does help with the bandwidth, but the request is made, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'd like to move on to Mr. Ihara, said he already had to go. He's, I know, interested in the the bridge project. Mr. Waters, thank you so much for coming tonight. Council Chair Waters, if you would.
Chair Welch, good to see everyone. Yesterday, we had a full council meeting at Honolulu Halli, which lasted approximately nine hours with a half hour break for lunch. We considered thirty pages of bills, and I just want to give you the skinny on that rather than going through all thirty pages. But as Director Crackey pointed out, we affirmed Jean Albano. One of the things that we've heard from our constituents is we want to make sure that our streams are cleaned in a timely manner. And we all impressed that upon him. He told us that he's gonna get it done, so we're gonna hold his feet to the fire as our new chief engineer for Department of Facility Maintenance. We also passed Bill forty-four. This is a measure to help stop monster homes. Because what we're finding out was that some of the builders were falsifying their submissions to DPP. We got a lot of pushback from that because people thought that if they say a false statement to a council member that they could go to jail. And of course, that's not the case. But I do hope that you all are truthful every time you talk to us. Bill six was a professional self certification bill. Again, the idea here that we could have architects self certify that their building plans are accurate. The idea really is to speed up the permitting process. I'm sure you've all either had experience or heard of problems at DPP with timeliness of permits. Resolution twenty-three dash one sixty-two is a charter amendment creating a climate resiliency fund. Really, the idea here is to to set aside some money for climate change and sea level rise and these big storms that were hap, are happening across the country, and that we want to be prepared for that. And the idea really is to be ahead of the game and try to save money now to to do that. One of the things that we're gonna have to do is raise up our roads, right, so that they they aren't underwater in the future. Something that that fund could be used for. Bill forty-six is related to flavored tobacco products. So we're preempted by state law. We cannot regulate flavored tobacco products. But it's a trigger law, which says that if the state were to change their law and allow the counties to regulate flavored tobacco, then this would kick in, this law. And I'm just a shout out to my, to the legislators here that that please consider this. It's a very, very, very dangerous product. And lots of little kids are using it, and it's directed at them when you have flavors like bubble gum and luau punch and things of that nature. So hopefully, our legislature this year can can look into that. Reso twenty-three dash one six zero Mo'ili'i affordable housing project. This is the Bola Jom project owned by Department of Hawaiian Homelands. It's the first time they're ever building a building for Hawaiians. So really interesting. It's a two oh one H project, which I'm happy to talk a little bit more about in a second. And the last highlight is Reso twenty-three dash one sixty-eight Kapaa Quarry Transfer Station for reusable material collection site. It's a pilot project, and instead of just throwing away that trash, reuse Hawaii, some of you may have heard of them in Kaka'ako. They would go down to Kapaa Quarry Transfer Station and actually take donations from people and then reuse this rather than going into the landfill. So it's really exciting for that. One other thing, if Chair, I can stop there, or, you know, real property taxation and affordable housing is top of mind for a lot of people. The city council is doing a lot with regard to property taxes and affordable housing, and I'm happy to expound upon that. But I want to be conscious of your time.
I appreciate that, Mr. Waters. I, yeah, well, why don't we stop there? Because those are gonna be some pretty lengthy discussions, I think, in their own right. But let's go to a couple of questions if we might for for people. Michelle, do you have a question for the council member?
Yes, there's something in the chat regarding Tommy Waters and GTS Director Morton working on legislation to reduce the number permitted, looks like Property Tax Assessment Division. I can't put these chat remarks together, but Amanda mentioned this. So are you working with Director Morton for, to reduce the number of what permitted? I'm not sure.
Oh, there's a huge concern about the block parties in Waikiki.
Okay.
And what happens is that they just stop traffic for five or six hours. And Waikiki community is really upset about that. So I'm working with them to reduce that amount. If you guys want to weigh in on that, that would be great. I haven't introduced the bill yet. I've written a draft, but I wanted to run it by folks. The other thing was a real property tax assessment division Amanda had commented on. I just do, since you brought it up, Michelle, that we've been pushing, the council has been pushing on the real property tax assessment division to be more transparent. And I hear what you're saying, Bruce Wong, but they're super conservative. You know, we have a number of measures dealing with property taxes, including capping it at a certain percentage that they can't go over or or increasing the homeowner's exemption. But, you know, I gotta tell you, they're doing their job. They're they're gotta balance the budget. They gotta make sure that the city keeps afloat. So I gotta tell you, though, we've been actually, the nine council members have all introduced real property tax measures. And for the most part, BFS says, no, don't do it. It's gonna, it's not, it's not gonna result in a balanced budget. But please watch our hearings and especially the budget hearings, because we talk about this stuff all the time. And it'd be great for you to see what the Budget and Fiscal Services Director and the RPAD Division actually say to us when we come up with these ideas.
Correct, we do. And the other thing is Bill forty-four, that's not just monster homes. I have a detailed docket that I've sent to DPP regarding false statements of people who are violating our zoning laws. And I'm happy to send it to you and Tyler Dos Santos Tam, who came over here to look at this monster house, which really isn't a monster house. It doesn't have nine bathrooms, but it's a monster house. And there are so many violations. There are twelve notices of violations, and they're still committing more. I just had a police officer come to my door during this meeting with some other trumped up thing. So we need to talk about these false statements from certain property owners under Bill forty-four, and it's not just monster homes. And I am happy to give you all of my information. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I will tell you, Bill forty-four, there was a lot of opposition to the bill. So we'll see what happens in the next committee hearing.
And you can give your testimony there. Thank you. And Daisy Marai?
Thank you, Chair. Like Chair Waters, I don't know if you or a council member say with no. Our total already did a presentation for a public hearing with the planning commission regarding the Waikiki Shell improvement. And they mentioned, and they showed the two rolls of permanent seats on the lawn area of the Waikiki Shell. Do you happen to know when it might go to council? Because I understand that's where it's gonna go next. And if Chair, if you could ask for them to do some kind of update to the community, it would really make a big difference. Thank you.
Daisy, I do not know when it will come to the council, but once it does, what I'll do is come and make that presentation to you folks. In writing, of course, but I'll also ask that they do the presentation to you in person. You've, all my neighborhood boards, I'd love them to weigh in on the shell.
Thank you. And Mr. Decker?
Thank you, Chairman Waters. I just, I just had a question about the retrofitting of office spaces in town. Is that something the city is involved with?
Yes, some developers have come to the council with the idea of creating affordable housing by retrofitting office spaces. One of them on Amana Street has been proposed. The other one was downtown. It's already going on in on Fort Street Mall. That seems to be successful. Since the office space, you know, there's, after COVID, a lot of people working from home. So that's been an idea on how to deal with the housing crisis. So yes, we've been looking at that a lot.
Thank you very much. I think that's a, I think that's a great idea because there's a lot of empty office spaces in town, especially on Bishop Street, and it should kind of brighten the area up if you know what I mean. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the idea, because you also want to support the businesses in the area. And the businesses are going, you know, belly up if they don't have customers.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Bruce, did you have something?
Yeah, you know, you know, when they pass height restrictions on certain areas, but then they give them an exemption to go up to two hundred and fifty feet, you know, that, to me, that doesn't make sense. You you create this height restriction, and then why do you give them an exemption? Who gives, who allows that exemption? That's my question.
Great question, because this happens a lot. So the legislature, in order to to try to fix the affordable housing problem, came up with a law. It's HRS Section two zero one subsection H. People call it two oh one H. Basically, what two oh one H does is it sets aside zoning, height restrictions, density. It sets aside statutes. It sets aside ordinances. It says that the city cannot collect fees from the developers, right, permitting fees in order to combat this crisis that we're in. They they created this law. So the city council either goes yes or no on it. We actually do have that say. But what we're hearing from housing advocates saying that they need housing, and the developers tell us the only way they can make it pencil, meaning make make it the budget work, is unless they get height and more dense, density. So that's, that's what's happening, right? So I've asked developers, how do you make it pencil at sixty percent of the area median income or below? Kind of similar to the conversation that they had. And they're saying that they have to do taxpayer subsidies. In other words, you all pays the developer to build these more affordable homes. Or we give them height and density. That's kind of been what the debate has been. So the way we've been looking at it is, we, we, we want to make sure we can pay our firefighters, police, ambulance, garbage pickup, sewer, water, all those things that we don't want to put taxpayer dollars directly to the, in the developers pockets. You know, I just was in a meeting with Senator Brian Schatz, Senate President, Speaker of the House, each mayor from each island. This was before the Lenai tragic fires. Each council chair, we all sat around the table and talked about how we can fix this crisis that we're in dealing with affordable housing. And that topic comes up again, the two oh one H, is this the solution that we want for affordable housing? Or do we want to put our money where our mouth is and and help, or we, the city, or the state for that matter, build homes? Right? We, right now, we've been relying on the developers to do it. Right? And on their own private property, by the way. But no, it's a tough debate. It really is. And and I just want to encourage you all to participate in the hearings that we're having to have your voices heard, not just here, but for the rest of the council to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. It's a, it's a big topic. We have a presentation from Sierra Club from a different angle tonight about the governor's resolution, and it's it's part of proclamation, I'm sorry. So it's, it's a complex problem. We, you, you deal with it a lot. I know, as just council members say, but I do.
I lights went off. I'm listening. I'm just gonna go.
And I do want to get to council members say so that we do have enough time for our presentation as well. So thank you so much for tonight, coming, Council.
Winston, thank you very much. For all the board members, Bruce, I'd be happy to meet with you anytime during the weekends. When you're free, I can go over what the process is in regards to developing the real property tax assessments. That's number one. Number two, Mar, Mar, Margaret, you gotta be aware of that sole place illegal construction of a home. Margaret? Okay, it's, it's sole place.
That'll be great, Councilman Say. That'll be great to meet with you, Councilman Say.
Thank you. But I just wanted to acknowledge all of our city and county employees who made their presentations this evening. They represent you and our problem for Tommy and I, the only funding we get to pay for their salaries is a real property tax. Tough as it is, we are trying our best. Two years ago, when I became the budget chair, we were using federal funds, FRF, federal relief funds, to pay for position counts. And today, we are trying to convert those federal funds to real property tax funds to pay for these employees that are servicing all of us. But I do have my report in the chat. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I think Chair Waters is correct. It was a nine hour marathon council meeting. I had about seven or eight measures before me as far as the zoning committee chair. And for Michelle, I'll do my best and share with you all the applications that do come in for you to take a look at. In closing, the problem for me, Winston, is what Chair Tommy Waters said is this. You want to keep the country country, or you want to have it criminalized as a suburbs? And that's where I think our predecessor, Dr. Calvin Say, only been here two and a half, two and a half years. This particular district five that I do represent is a primary urban center where our predecessor wanted to have more development going vertical rather than going horizontal out into the country. The Windward Side, Central Oahu, West Oahu, et cetera. And that's the dilemma that we, as council members, face today with Tommy and I and the other seven members. It's tough. It is really, really tough because state and county government doesn't have the resources to pay for all of the affordables. And I brought this up with the Mo'ili'i Makali Neighborhood Board, the Manoa Neighborhood Board, the Makiki Neighborhood Board, that I'm proud to say. that I'm proud to say that hey, at least the District Five has public housing, which is in Palolo Valley. And that's where the question would be someday, do you want that type of sixty to thirty percent AMI in your particular district? And a lot of times the answer is no, not in my backyard. And that's a dilemma I face today too, because when I got elected, how many units were we short of housing? Twenty-two thousand plus. And we are trying to bring that down. So in closing, that's all I have to say. And any questions that you folks may have, we're happy to respond.
And and thank you, Councilmember Say, for uh coming tonight and also for offering to share with us any things that come before your committee on housing, that especially if we can get it earlier than later, that helps anything that we can do.
Okay, but it's not housing. It's zoning.
I'm sorry. Yes, I must spoke. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I see uh Councilmember Say's office has put uh contact information in the side for you to contact uh with help and they always get back to me. So thank you again and also for your pointing out our civil servants uh and the hard work that they do and the hard work that you do for us as civil servants as well.
So in closing, yeah, you know, you have to thank Anton Crocky, who's a director, Roger Morton, who's also a director, our police officers, our firefighters, et cetera, who all attend the neighborhood board meetings. These are your servants for the greater good of our public service of Oahu and the county. And Chair Waters, thank you very much.
As well as your 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 dedicated staff.
Thank you.
So if you can, please do stay for the uh the the presentation on Sierra Club. It'll be brief. And at this point, we're gonna have a a short presentation before that about the aquarium water intake system from uh Bernice uh Sannelli. Um if you would, I see you there. Okay, thank you.
Aloha. Can we start? Should I start?
Yep, go ahead.
Well, good evening and aloha, um board members, and thank you for having us. I'm Bernice Sannelli. I'm with Oceanet and we're helping the University of Hawaii design and uh do the approvals and permitting on this project. It is a Waikiki Aquarium Water Intake System. And with me in the room today are Brandon Shima, who is the manager of the Office of Project Delivery at the University of Hawaii, Liz Liz Ditzelma, who is the project manager of this project, Jason Lee and Om Das, who are project engineers from Oceanet. And before we go on to talk about the water intake system, uh I want to talk a little bit about some of you may remember, we were at the at your board last year in July and we talked about the water discharge system upgrade. And I'm happy to say that it it has, it is now, it has moved along. It is uh we had it was a good project because what the project would do is to eliminate effluent discharge into the ocean as well as into the municipal water system. And so we that's very important for environmental to to re- reduce a lot of environmental impacts. So since we met with you, we have a final environmental assessment that was accepted. It has uh we did receive positive feedback from you all at that time. And UH is currently in the process of soliciting construction bids. So again, that was the the discharge system and tonight we are talking about the water intake system. And so I'm gonna hand this over to Brandon Shima and we're gonna share our screen with you. There you go.
Can everybody see that, our presentation?
Yep.
PowerPoint? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bernard. Oh, sorry to me, into presentation mode.
Dylan, I see that you're recording this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Everybody still see that? PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so this is an overall view of the Waikiki Aquarium. So kind of just give everybody a uh direction. I think I'm pretty sure everybody knows where the aquarium is, but next to the netatorium. This is the existing current configuration of the intake system, which is right here. So essentially, the overall phase two of this intake system is a replacement, one for one. We're not, we're not impeding the environmental oral reefs any more than it has already been historically. So we're just replacing that pipe one for one. There's three different ways that the aquarium gets its water. So one is this intake pipe that comes offshore. There's another one with a deep water well that's on property that they also use as a redundant source of saltwater. And the third is a freshwater for sea animals that require um freshwater, which comes from the city municipal freshwater source. Can you see, can you see my cursor where I'm pointing?
No, no.
No, oh, okay, sorry. But um so this is a different view, but the only element of the project that is off property is that intake pipeline that is in turquoise that goes from north to south of the page. All the other improvements, the the pumps, the filters that we're doing as part of this project is within the limits of the Waikiki Aquarium property. Uh this is a a little different view. I know it's a little bit busy with all the callouts and everything, but it kind of just shows that all all the technical equipment, new installations is within the the limits of the Waikiki Aquarium property. And then Bernard, I think his next slide on the timeframe?
Okay. Okay, so in terms of the timeframe, we are currently conducting preconsultation and we extended the period. Uh thank you to the to Dylan and also the Chair. We extended it to so that you had enough time after you heard our presentation to it. So it's going on to August twentieth. I want to assure you that we have been meeting with agencies and talking to various permit permitting and approval people. So we've met with the Army Corps of Engineers. We've met with Department of Land Natural Resources, Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands. And we've also met with the City and County Department of Planning and Permitting. And we continue to meet with them so we can get their guidance on how to can, you know, do the environmental assessment. We're hoping to publish the draft environmental assessment early next year, January, February. Want to complete the design in about March of twenty twenty-four. And that's very important. You know, we're trying to stay on schedule. The in terms of permits and approvals, I'd like to, I wish I could give you a date, but it's kind of hard. This is, this process will involve federal, state and county agencies. And so you know, we're, that's why we're working with them so early, so that we don't have any surprises. In terms of starting construction, we'd like to start in mid to late twenty twenty-six. And then that would be following the the um the discharge. So the injection roll slash discharge system I mentioned earlier would be going on prior to when we start the intake system. And hopefully, everything will be all completed in mid twenty twenty-eight. And.
And that's the end of our presentation. Appreciate it, everybody. And thank you in advance for your support. If there's any comments, questions, we'll be glad to answer that now.
Can you put uh your contact information in the chat?
Sure.
For people to contact you because they may have some specific questions um and have time to formulate them in a better way.
Sure, will do.
We appreciate you coming tonight very much and extending the deadline for that. And I see there's one question from Ms. Mattson.
I can my hand up.
Just ju- just a comment that uh really appreciate the information and Oceanet being involved. They're a very respected company uh and consultant firm and uh we wish you the best on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Linda?
Yes, um I just want to uh note that the construction uh is very tight between Kaimana Beach and the aquarium. And if you um access the aquarium through the uh carriage road, you know, the curved road, um I I I think you got a hard situation there and uh maybe you should plan on it and think about it ahead of time. Because um I we wouldn't want any dirt loads of, you know, stuff or, you know, construction zone. Because it's already hard to turn around in that area because the aquarium has part of it. And they access that back gate a lot. So um that's a um something waiting to happen. So I just want you to be sure and think of that before you, as you're planning things. Thank you.
Yep, of of course. And and currently, the current construction plan is for all the access to be from the Waikiki Aquarium property. What we're.
That's good.
Right, we're not planning on anything, any access outside of the aquarium property.
I don't know if you're aware, but a lot of the employees uh gather up there by that back gate and bring things in and out of there. I've talked to them several times and uh they they open that back gate and offload stuff and park their trucks on the carriage road and they play loud music.
Okay, uh um I I I can't speak to the operations folks, but I know for construction, which we we're gonna control, we're we're not gonna allow that. We're gonna go through the aquarium front, their their main driveway. And we already have a a best management practice planned so that there's no dirt or anything that gets brought on to any city streets.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shima. Uh thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, and finally, we have the Sierra Club with a presentation about the Governor's Emergency Proclamation on Housing. Uh it I Wayne Tanaka's here and uh he's the Executive Director of the Sierra Club. Um and Wayne, if we if we run out of time tonight, I know people will want to follow this. It's a big, huge thing. Uh and uh unfortunately, our time is always limited, but we have twenty minutes left. The meeting will end at nine. We're we're not going to, just for everybody else, we're not going to get to any of our um committee reports or approval of minutes, and that's fine. Um uh the next meeting will be Thursday, September fourteenth at six P M. Um and so there's some meeting minute notes on the agenda, but if people are interested for other uh parts of the presentation that they may not be able to hear for cutoff, then uh if you could let us know how we can hear those or see those or what other uh times you might have uh presentations on, and we can also post that as well later. So thank you so much for coming tonight.
Mister Chair, point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
This is exactly why we are bound and gagged by the Neighborhood Commission Office and cutting off our meetings before our agenda is finished. I just want.
Hundred percent agree. Hundred percent agree. Thank you. And thank you, Wayne, for coming in. If you need to share your screen now, feel free.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and and thank you so much, members of the board. Uh Wayne Tanaka with Circle of Hawaii. I know our time is limited, so I'll try to be uh quick with this presentation. Um but just really uh, you know, thankful for your interest in this topic. I think it's a lot bigger of a deal than um and not in a good way, uh that that's that's being discussed in in, you know, um in mainstream media and so forth. Um so I thought I'd just take a a few minutes to go over, I guess, the top five uh concerns with this emergency proclamation on housing that was signed on uh July seventeenth. Um uh I'm gonna first talk about some of the constitutional issues, uh then some of the the huge transparency uh issues that are being raised, uh issues with fiscal accountability, uh Connie Home Rule and uh and and also about the uh issues with the enforcement and compliance of these developer agreements and other safeguards in the proclamation. Um and then I I was gonna hopefully have time for correct questions, but we'll 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 see if if there is. Um and you can, I put my email in the chat, so you can always uh email me directly if you have any questions. And I'll I'll send this uh presentation to the Chair so that he can distribute it to you. Um so first, uh in terms of the constitutional issues, right? So we we know, you know, the legislature, we have a, you know, three branches of government. The legislature with elected lawmakers makes the laws, executive branch, in this case, the governor uh and his cap, his departments executes those laws and the judiciary ensures that the laws are applied fairly and 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 justly and and consistent with the constitution, the law of the land. Um here what we have is is the governor using his emergency powers uh to suspend and replace a whole slew of laws that the legislature created. Um and and he is replacing these with his own emergency rules. Um and uh what these what these suspensions do also is, and by design, is prevent the judiciary or the courts from vindicating uh individual rights, constitutional rights and property rights that um would otherwise uh you know, that that could be impacted by decisions made under this proclamation. Uh and I think it's important to note that, you know, the emergency authority that the governor is using is, you know, they're intended for discrete events like hurricanes, like fires, like like uh volcano eruptions. Uh not, you know, these, not something that's very complex, that's been uh developed and persistent for generations, uh depends on a number of uh intertwined uh social political policies and 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 systemic roots. And and so when you're tackling something like a housing emergency, you want uh solutions that are both targeted and multi-pronged and tailored uh to the challenges. Um and and so just as an example of the arbitrary nature of of what's being put forward in this emergency proclamation, you know, it doesn't include things that could really target the various facets of our housing crisis, right? So there's not, there's no tax relief for occupied long-term residential units, for A D U construction, which you know would be um, you know, meet the existing demand of local folks. Uh there's no subsidies or water credits for truly affordable affordable development. Um you know, or um you know, or even like converting built spaces, like buildings already exist. Um there's nothing to rein in private equity firms or real estate investment trusts, which I think was mentioned, right? These these foreign entities coming in, investing in land, investing in housing, um hiking up rents and then in three or four years flipping uh you know, the you know, those properties to make a profit, uh which, you know, drives up property taxes, drives up housing costs. Um you know, the number, top two things that are um inhibiting the the timely development of housing is is water and uh and sewage, right? And but there's nothing in here that talks about watershed protection, uh nothing in here talks about a water conservation, so we have more water on for housing. Um nothing talks about re- uh investing in reuse so that we're not um you know, we're both, we're not drawing water from the aquifer, uh instead reusing water for irrigation of parks and so forth. Uh nothing about, you know, uh making sure prisoners who have paid a debt to society rehabilitated, so that they actually have opportunities to to reenter society and and the community. Um two big things it doesn't have is any affordability or income requirements for development that's built. Uh and it does not have any meaningful safeguards against folks from overseas who want to, you know, buy property, move to paradise. Uh and and those are, you know, and those, that is also by design. Um we have two oh one H that does have affordability requirements, although there, I'll talk about that later. Um but uh and yeah, uh this this proclamation, if you read its language, it's it's specifically about allowing all kinds of development. Um and so what happens when you allow market rate development, you know, um throughout the islands uh and that aren't reserved meaningfully for local folks, when we 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 know we have limited space and we have limited amounts of water we can sustainably use for housing. Um what that means is that there's less of these critical resources for um truly affordable housing, like housing that can meet the needs of people here in Hawaii right now that really need it. Um and and so the bottom line is, you know, I'm not trying to get into a a discussion about housing policy. Have to do that later, but the bottom line is these are really com- this is a really complex issue and you can't solve it by arbitrary, you know, uh and unilateral imposition of policies that could actually make the problem worse. Um and and so, you know, like uh this, I also wanted to note, and there's there's a, there's a slippery slope that we're sliding down right now, right? It'd be really hard to distinguish this kind of action from a future governor deciding that crime is an emergency, crime is an emergency, right? And then um deciding on his own that the best solution is to impose a curfew on everyone and then build private prisons in the egglands, right? Like how that's, crime is a very complex, multifaceted issue. You want to solve it thoughtfully and not by unilateral, um you know, imposition of your own ideas. Um the uh second major concern is it's um erosion of transparency, uh which we know is a is a bedrock of a democratic government. Um so it suspends a sunshine law, which you're all very familiar with. Um so there's no public input, no list, no public input uh required for any decision um by any any border commission that that touches housing. Um it also allows a single person uh to negotiate and approve housing projects without a working group. So a single person, uh in this case, the housing officer could make a whole bunch of decisions and approve a big range of projects uh with, again, without public notice, without public input. And even if the sunshine law suspension was removed because this is a single person and not a border commission, sunshine wouldn't apply to them. Um and and so uh, you know, just, I think the sunshine law itself explains how important it is and why we need to uh why it's such a critical part of democracy, right? Uh in a democracy, it's people, you know, government for of the people, by the people, for the people, right? Um and the only way to ensure that the government um uh is protecting the public's interests is to make sure that the public can scrutinize and participate in decision-making. Um and 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 this is the law, essential law is what what ensures that, and that's what's being suspended. And I just put this here, this is a screenshot from the proclamation, so you can see that um what the language is. I just put this here, this is a screenshot from the proclamation so you can see that, um, what the language is. Um, and so, you know, in, you know, decisions to, uh, certify projects, move forward under the proclamation, uh, to override things like building height limits or, uh, you know, score infrastructure fees, which means we'll have to pay more fees, right? If these new developments, uh, get to scale on those, um, things like, you know, parking requirements, like all these things, these decisions can be made by the working group without sunshine. Um, you know, the working group also has to look at developer agreements and those contents could also be, uh, uh, determined without any public input or notice. Uh, the county councils under this proclamation would be able to convert up to a hundred acres of ag land, um, or rural lands to urban uh, at a time. Um, and those decisions could be made without sunshine. So many things, so many decisions that could impact our quality of life, um, our landscape, our environment, our culture integrity for decades, for generations, literally would not be subject to any public military input potentially under this proclamation. Um, with respect to the, the ability of the lead housing officer to, um, allow projects to proceed under proclamation, right? Any city or county housing projects, um, could be approved without even a working group, um, um, providing input. So uh, things like, uh, determining the archaeological sensitivity of areas, or if there's going to be significant impacts, like these are all being made uh, by a single person, uh, with no, no, no public input or, or, or notice. Um, and just as a side note, there's no, there's nothing in this proclamation, uh, which suspends our historic preservation laws, but there's nothing in here that deals with architectural historic properties. So things like the Kamaki Reservoir, uh, Queen's Theater, the netatorium, all those things, you know, there's no real protections for any of those types of historic properties. Uh, the other big thing is the, the housing officer is, uh, the only person that can monitor and force compliance with any development agreements um, and determine what penalties there should be, if any. Uh, and again, these, these actions would be done by a single person without any, you know, public oversight or recourse. Um, this is just a language that, 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 that shows what's, what's happening. Land, the housing officer can approve uh, any state or county project, uh, which is super broadly defined. This isn't just, uh, project on state or county lands or using the funds. Like if you get a single exemption, a single waiver, that's a state or county project under the proclamation. That project can be approved by the single person. Um, there's also issues with fiscal accountability. Um, so it actually is, and this is a constitutional issue as well, but it suspends the general fund statute that says the legislature, uh, directs how taxpayer dollars are to be spent, right? Um, it also suspends the procurement, uh, solicitation process, which is a process of, you know, the competitive bidding. So it's a safeguard against, um, corruption or waste. Um, and, and essentially allows, you know, this was a lot of direct deal making between, you know, government officials and, you know, the hand-selected, you know, contractors. Um, and so as, for example, so money is that the legislature set aside for a community center or for agriculture or for a school could get redirected from this proclamation, uh, because it's an emergency and then contracted it out to, you know, a hand, a handpicked developer. Um, and so what, what could go wrong under that kind of scenario? Um, oh, sorry. Uh, and so, yeah, I'll skip over this, but this is, this, this, this is, the top is the proclamation suspension of the general fund. Um, and the, the language, that's a general fund language with, with the affirmation of legislature's role to direct our taxpayer dollars of expense. Um, this is a public procurement code, uh, suspension, and it does say there's rules, uh, to, you know, supposedly safeguard against corruption and waste, I guess. But if you look at the rules, which are on the bottom, um, it just repeats the language and just says after the award is given, so after they've selected the contract and um, then all you have to do is make sure the person is, you know, paid our taxes and then, uh, post the word, um, on, uh, uh, or keep the word on, on file. Um, so nothing to, you know, again, then direct deal making that could be, lead to, um, less than ideal, uh, expenditures. Um, there's also issues with Connie Home Rule. Uh, so it suspends chapter 46, uh, with, with, uh, regard to any provision that, uh, may be related to housing or infrastructure. Um, so that's zoning, that's, uh, zoning, which is informed by community participation, uh, you know, community plans. Um, the, all that goes potentially out the window if a project touches housing. Um, and also, interestingly enough, um, it, this proclamation isn't necessarily about two on each, but if a two on each project wants to use proclamation, the county councils no longer have a say in whether or not, uh, two on each project, uh, can, you know, um, uh, should be modified or, you know, maybe have more affordable or maybe, you know, not basically it takes with the county council's input and gives it to the director of the Department of Planning and Permitting. And this is just a language that, that, um, you know, top is a, is a county, the, um, chapter 46 suspension. And then, uh, on the bottom, uh, this is how the two on each, um, it takes away the authority of the two on each, uh, of the county councils under, for two on each projects. Um, and just, just to note, for these two on each thirty-eight projects, to qualify for all of the exemptions and waivers under two on each thirty-eight, you have to have half of the units at a hundred forty percent of the AMI or less. And so this is the, this is one forty AMI for this year. Um, uh, if you look, a studio that rents for over $3,000, $3,200 is affordable. And so a developer could have half the units at this, at this price point and have the other half at higher price points. And that would be an affordable housing project that, that could, uh, be approved on two, two on each thirty-eight. Um, and then finally, uh, you know, there's, there's developer agreements that are supposed to have, it's very big, but it's supposed to have certain provisions in there to, to, um, you know, guide these projects. There's, there's owner occupancy requirements for, for sale units, um, of, you know, I think five years. Um, and but all these things, really the lead housing officer is only person under proclamation, uh, that can enforce compliance with these, these agreements and these requirements and developer commitments. Uh, and that raises the question, how is this, this single office, single person, single office supposed to monitor, what, 50,000 units to investigate compliance issues? To enforce them, it's like, there's a real process you have to go through, right? You, you know, you have to have evidence, you have to prove, you know, um, you know, more, that's more likely not as violation, there's going to be appeal processes. It takes a lot to enforce. And, and we know, right, with, with monster homes, with illegal vacation rentals and so forth, like the DPP can't hardly handle, you know, compliance with, you know, their stuff. And so this one person has to monitor compliance across the state for, you know, dozens of projects. Um, and if she does, you know, make decisions, there's really no recourse. So if she gives a slap on the wrist or decides not to enforce, then you know, there's really nothing we can do. Um, and then the big question is, this proclamation is supposed to end in a year. Um, in one year, that means it goes away, which means the lead housing officer and her enforcement authority goes away. So after a year, there's, there's no mechanism for, for enforcement or compliance at all. Um, and these projects are supposed to commence in three years. So the, in three years, there's not going to be anyone to, to monitor these projects for, for compliance or enforcement. So, uh, I mean, so that, that's really, uh, yeah, and this is just language that talks about, um, the lead housing officer's authority, right? So the working group, which I'm, which we're on, um, can raise issues and concerns, but it all, it all falls on the lead housing officer to investigate and to, and to enforce and to decide what corrective actions there are. And just an interesting note, uh, it, it seems like these development agreements are only triggered when the working group approves a project. Uh, it's not clear what happens if the lead housing officer on her own approves a project, right? That, that individual. So do they have, even, do they even have a development agreement that's enforceable? Like, it's, it's, it's very unclear. If you read this express language of the proclamation, these, uh, projects approved by the lead housing, housing officer have no development agreements. So that's it.
Yes. And I just, before we disappear in a minute, as people read those questions, I wanted to say thank you so much for coming. I think we should have a planning and zoning committee. I would suggest it held with the parks and environment. If you would be willing to come back and elaborate on these points in the future before we bleep over to the zero, zero hour. Um, this was amazing presentation in 15 minutes powerhouse. If people aren't paying attention now, I don't know what we can do to get them to pay attention to this. But, um, anyway, I really wanted to thank you so much for coming tonight, um, and trying to condense this very important issue into a short period. Um, and I hope you would be willing to come back with us, um, at a later, um, time for a committee meeting where we can elaborate on these, um, points.
Chair, we have a quick comment from member Knight.
Uh, yes, and if we run over, then, um, the meeting will end when it ends. Uh, obviously we have a lot more to discuss here than we can. And I think we just blooped over and Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
A quick comment, um, because I'm part of an advocacy group that kind of works with us. Um, as he said, it ends in a year, but every 60 days it does have to be resigned. So if our neighborhood board does want to like create a resolution in our committees, um, that would probably be beneficial because it, as much as attention we can get to it, and as long as it's more clear and concise and we can actually show what's happening, we can actually influence. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And I think we officially have to end the meeting now. Um, so my apologies.
Planning and zoning committee, I fully concur as chair. I, I think we need to move ahead with a resolution, uh, based on these points in our previous two resolutions to consolidate all of this with a very strong message to both the governor and the city council that seems to be, uh, sliding these things through. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I will defer that then to your committees to hold this and invite Mr. Tanaka back. And, um, with that, I would say thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'm sorry, we had to truncate its time as always. As, as pointed out, this is not, uh, we have a lot, too much business to handle in three hours. And if we had had another few minutes for everybody, that would be great. But Wayne, you're doing terrific work. Thank you so much for coming tonight. And thank you, everyone, for being here.
Chair, Dylan here?
Yes.
Uh, I did just want to announce that we do have the first environment committee scheduled for next week, Thursday, August 17th at 5:30 PM at Paki Hale, in person only. Please attend. Um, if you have any committee meetings coming up, you need to contact me because it needs to be legal. Um, also in the future, if we can have, um, I'll make a note for you, but on the agendas, um, we can have a note that says all committee agendas are due to the chair by this date so that we can consolidate the mailouts into one, saving resources for everybody. Thank you, Chair. Also, Linda Wong, can you stay online after I end the meeting?
Thank you, Dylan. Great, everyone. Have a good evening.